Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for the City of Grand Forks. This is August 24th, 2020. Welcome to downtown Grand Forks. Welcome and roll call. Item 1.1. Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Bommy.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Discussion items. Item 2.1, Application for Property Tax Incentives for New or Expanding Businesses from JR Investments.
Chairwoman Mock and members of the committee. The application before you is for a new and expanding business. We haven't done one of these for a bit, so I just want to quickly give you some highlights. These are for primary sector businesses. Typically, what we've done in the past are five-year declining, meaning 100% the first year, 80%, 60%, 40%, 20% for years one through five. And in this case, there's some due diligence that we're still doing. It's pretty common. We'll work through the Department of Commerce in terms of the primary sector note that we'll get. And in terms of the business, it is for Countrywide Sanitation. They are doing, the ownership of the building is going to be under JR Investments, Inc. It's pretty common to have a real estate holding. The business itself does recycling amongst other things that really feed into that recycling piece. So all of the parts of what they're going to be doing are really going to feed into that recycling, which is bringing new dollars into the community, which is really that primary sector piece. So the project that they're going to be doing is at 1925 North 42nd Street. It's an administrative building, about 7,000 square foot plus some warehouse office space. That'll be the expansion. So the thought is, is get them in today and then get them fully operational up. And as, as they move through those five years, the taxes increase. With that, what we're really doing tonight is setting the public hearing. That'll be for, we're recommending that for October 5th, 2020. That meets all the deadline requirements that we have to have with the state. I'm happy to stand for any questions, and the applicants, I think, are in the audience as well.
Thank you very much. Council questions? Comments? Mr. Weber?
Just congratulations to a fantastic local business on this expansion opportunity. I'll move approval.
Thank you. Sorry, second. Second. Any other comments or discussion? Anybody on the phone? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 2.2, Asset Forfeiture Policy Development.
Chairperson Mock, members of the committee. My name is Deputy Chief Jim Reamer, representing the Police Department. One of the things that we've been working on recently is the Civil Asset Forfeiture Policy. Because of the last legislative session, there were some changes made in this part of the Century Code that required us to develop a policy. We worked with Mr. Gustaf's office very closely, and we laid out different things for this that included the permissible uses for forfeited property or proceeds, non-eligible uses, application requirements. We developed a modified one of our current forms. Police departments live on forms, so we had to get more paperwork going with this. We have an application process and also an award criteria. If approved, normally, the chief of police would be able to approve requests for this that come from the police department. This is an internal issue normally, where requests would come in from a member of the department to use these funds, and then we would have to make sure that it meets the requirements that are laid out in policy. We follow the city's purchasing policy when we go through this and, and make these purchases. For the civil, I'm sorry, forfeited assets, they come from either here at the police department, or we're also a member of the Grand Forks Narcotics Task Force, and some of those funds also come from that entity. Because we're members there, some of those funds then funnel down into the police department. We've had this fund for, for many years. It's just with this new law that's in place, we had to come up with a new policy, and that's what is before you today. So I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Weber?
Specifically, is there any change in the length of time between when the property is forfeited and when it can be, those assets can be used by the city?
I don't believe that there was any change in that timeframe.
And that timeframe currently is?
I don't know what's timeframe. We're talking about funds that have already been forfeited to the, to the city and, and the process. There's a fairly lengthy process through the criminal. When somebody gets, you know, a drug-related offense or something, the court has a lengthy process, and it's after that process is completed, after the funds have been forfeited, that's where this money gets deposited. So, you know, I don't know what the length of period of time is, but we're talking after everything is completed.
And it's usually tied to a criminal case.
Right, right. We have a drug dealer. We assume that the boat was purchased with the profits or was used for, for dealing, then that property is forfeited.
Yeah, the court would forfeit it, and then after that, we're able to get access to those funds if that's, the court decides to do that.
And largely, this is just to bring us in line with the changes in the North Dakota Century Code. I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Mr. Cavani? Also, any further discussion? On the phone? Hearing none.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Mr. Sandy?
No, I just appreciate all the hard work that our police department does, and this is another item that you're taking the lead for, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Item 2.3, Project Update for Project Number 8048, North Third Street Reconstruction, University to Demers.
Good evening, Chairperson Mock and members of the committee. So what you've got before you is a project update for the reconstruction of North Third Street, and the bounds of this project are from Demers to University. I'm going to flip through a couple slides here on the computer just as I go through this. So the bounds of the project are up on the screen there, from Demers to University. And we wanted to provide some background for this project because the last time it was brought to the committee or to council was July of 2019, so it's been a little while since this one's been brought forward. So just a little refresh, North Third Street is being proposed to be reconstructed using about $2.4 million worth of federal funding through the Urban Grant Program. And like a lot of these projects, it's funded at 81, about 81% federal funds and 19% local funds until that $2.4 million cap is reached, and that is for all eligible expenses. And once that cap is reached, the city is responsible for 100% of the remaining costs. So since the last time this project was brought forward, we've been going through preliminary engineering. And as part of, part of this, we've also gathered some public input and worked with the DDA to gather input for the area on this project. And so far, those efforts for public input have gone really, really well. What we expected to be the preferred alternatives and the preferred design concept for this area has actually been what the public has been supportive as well. So like I mentioned, we had a public input meeting, and we worked with the DDA because we didn't get what we felt was adequate input on the public input meeting, so the DDA assisted us. And the alternative up on the screen right now, Alternative 1A, is what we expected to be the preferable alternative for this section, and it's what the public also supported pretty strongly. And just some brief details about this section. It's very, very similar to what currently exists on North Third Street with diagonal parking on the east side of the road or the riverside of the road up here, and then parallel parking on the other side of the road. And the reason that we expected this one to be the preferred alternative is because it maintains the maximum amount of parking spots on this section of road. And there's a couple other benefits with this, too. Because it's very similar to what currently exists, we wouldn't have to spend the time and money to relocate some of the stormwater infrastructure along the corridor. So there's that going for it as well. But as far as the public was concerned, the main draw was that it maintains a lot of parking. So we did present quite a bit of other alternatives that could have gone for the geometry of this section, and I'm going to go through two other ones that got quite a bit of attention but didn't get nearly as much as the first one that I showed you. So Alternative 1B here takes that diagonal parking on the east side of the road and replaces it with parallel parking. And the change in that parking stall orientation gets you a little bit of extra width that you can use throughout the entire section. So for this alternative, that extra width was used on the sidewalks to provide some wider sidewalks in the corridor. And other than that, the main change is that this curb line on the east side or the riverside of the road, it would get moved. So then, like I said, with the other one with diagonal parking, this one would have to have some stormwater infrastructure relocated because of that curb line switch. So it would be a little bit more expensive, but the main reason we didn't think this one would get much traction is because of the parking loss on this one. And much like the one I just showed you, Alternative 1C is the exact same orientation with park, parallel parking on both sides, except this one, that extra width that I talked about, is used to add into the driving lanes to make them share or bicycle lanes. And the reason that it has to be added there is because there's a federal regulation as to how wide a lane has to be to be considered a share-a-lane, and that's 14 feet. So the sidewalks did get about a foot or two wider on this alternative, but the main use of space gain is for those, those altern, or the driving lanes there. And then I'll just leave up the overview here of the project here. That's all that's really going for the visuals here. But other things that we discussed at the public input meetings were the phasing of construction once we do get to that point of this project, and that really affects how the businesses get their access. So we presented it in two ways. There's really two ways that you can approach this, and one of those is with closing the whole road down at once and trying to get it all done in one shot. So this is going to lower the overall construction time and probably be a little bit cheaper in the long run just because the contractor wouldn't have to mobilize and move all their equipment multiple times. And the other way you could do it is to break it into multiple phases. But we kind of expected that the best way, or what we expected to be the best way, would be to just get it all done and try and shave off as much time because Demers ended up drying out for quite some time. And at our public input meetings, that was the overall opinion, was to just get as much of this done as we possibly can. And then those are the two main issues that got discussed quite a bit. As far as the decorative elements that you see on Demers, the intention for North Third is to very closely mimic that with the colored pavers, the streetscaping features, and the streetlights that are out there. So there was really no pushback on any of that. Everyone seems to be pretty widely in favor of that. And along with those is also, I forgot to mention, the curb extensions that you see on Demers Avenue. You'd see those also on North Third Street. So everyone seems to be pretty well in favor of those. So that's where we're sitting with all of the public input. And as far as the decorative light columns go, I know there's been some questions going around on how those are going to be handled on Demers Avenue. So what we're planning to do on North Third Street is install the conduit underneath the sidewalk and then leave space for those light bases and those light columns on the sidewalks, in which case, if and when those are decided that we'd like those on North Third Street, the opportunity is there to put those in. But currently, they're not planned to be in the construction. Not that that couldn't change at any time here, but for now, they're not planned for that. So where we're currently at on this project is the development of a document called the Documented Categorical Exclusion, or we just call it a CADDx. And this is required for all federally funded projects, and it kind of details the project's needs, its scope, the public input, and some other details like that. And this document is going to require council's approval and selection of a desired alternative. At this point, we're not looking for that right now. This is just an informational piece. And typically, on that CADDx document, there's going to be a no-build alternative and then build alternatives, or maybe even a single one. However, if you include a build alternative, it has to be fully explored and developed, and all of the information about how you're going to construct the road for that alternative has to be fully fleshed out. So because this project is likely to reach its cap in federal funding, we're going to try and approach this a little differently and have the committee and then council approve a single build alternative to be included in this documented CADDx so that we can eliminate the consultant time and then money that we're going to spend on the consultant developing numerous different alternatives. And the reason we're doing that and feel pretty comfortable doing that is because what we thought would be the best alternative and what we expected to be the preferred alternative for North Third is what the public is supporting as well. So we'd like to have council narrow down that option prior to getting to the CADDx. And like I said, this will just eliminate some time and cost that goes into the consultant engineering. So that's where we're at with this project right now, and I can answer any questions that anyone might have or any comments.
Thank you very much. Any discussion questions?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Veen.
So the $2.4 million that's been allocated to the project, we haven't really done a complete design in engineer's estimate. Is that number kind of a pre-design planning number that come forward? Where does?
So that number is what's been granted to us by the, the Federal Grant Program. That's what they have allocated for us to use for this project, so it was determined through the grant process.
Okay, because they, I would hope they would have, and is that the construction cost or the project cost?
That would include construction costs and our consultant or our design engineering fees as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Weber?
Excuse me, Christian. You mentioned the, the lighting, the.
Yes.
The signature lighting.
Yes.
On, on Demers. And you mentioned that there's been some talk.
Yeah.
Is there, do you have any more information, or does anyone else have any more information about that?
I personally don't have any information as to where we're at in the discussions for those decorative light pillars on Demers, but we are considering them for this project.
Maybe Mr. Phelan does.
Counsel Vice President Mock and Counselmember Weber, we are under consideration. You know, we have performed better this year. Remember, we, we brought forward, we'll call it the Dave Badman Group with the light pillars in March, but that was one of the things, we, we accepted their proposal, but we held off on, on funding that proposal. And as you recall, it was around $440,000. The other part, the funding was going to come from our, our, our street infrastructure funds because it was kind of capping off that Demers Avenue streetscape as moving forward. So Mayor Bocinski and, and I and others have contemplated this, and we are planning, all things being equal, to, to bring that back to the September 8th, I think, which is the next city council meeting, for further consideration. Reason why we're going to do it is I think it's important to kind of capstone our investment that we made in Demers Avenue, capstone the federal and state investment in there, too. And we're almost home. I think number two is that we've performed better financially than we were a little afraid of back in March. And so I think as we've demonstrated to you, when we've gone through the 2020 budget and 21, that we've performed better. Number two, we're anticipating receiving some additional funds from the CARES funding back to the city of Grand Forks. So all told, we think we should move forward with that. Details to come, and we, we anticipate unless something else happens that we would brief that at the city council meeting. That's where it ended, so that we, we may ask for, to move that on. I think, you know, excellent job as usual on the presentation is that we do want to sink this in so that we, we do have the conduit in that so that, you know, maybe it's not the, it's the when, not the if, and, and then try to make it symmetrical with what we've done at Demers. So Third Street doesn't look like we've kind of haphazardly thrown one in there just for good measure, that it looks like we, if we come back to the town 10 years from now, it was meant to be the way it was. So that's what we're planning on doing, and so more to come. That's why it's important to get information. We presume the city council was for moving forward, as long as we, you know, I know Mr. Veen has brought it up, too. Hey, where are we at with that? So I want to give you an update on where we're at with that.
Wonderful, thanks. And otherwise, this was information only tonight?
Yes.
I don't have any further comments at this time.
Any other discussion from council? Anyone on the phone? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item 2.4, Revised Cost Participation Maintenance Agreement and Engineering Agreement for Project Number 7951 Traffic Signal Backplate and Red Light Confirmation Indicator Lights. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Vice President Mock and members of the committee. What you have before you is the amendment for Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreements as well as the engineering agreement for this project. The proposed project itself consists of installation of some retroreflective backplates as well as some red light confirmation indicators. The retroreflective backplates, it's essentially a reflective border that goes around the backplate itself to make it more visible, particularly at night, to hopefully prevent people from unintentionally running red lights. The red light confirmation indicators, we actually have a couple of signals around town that have these, and these are the blue lights that are mounted on the traffic signal heads themselves, and this allows for police department to do red light enforcement with only needing one officer on the downstream side. The amendment in front of you is for the installation of red light confirmation lights at 10 different intersections along Gateway Drive. The North Dakota Department of Transportation ended up requesting this, and is also supplying approximately $52,400 worth of federal and state funds for it. This is a 90% federal, 10% state funding for the additional work along Gateway Drive. Now, this would also include some additional changes to our environmental clearance document, which would have to be done under the design engineering portion of the contract, which is 100% city-funded. We are anticipating that this is going to be handled within our existing contract. The amount is relatively minimal from what we're understanding, and so we're not going to need to do any kind of amendment on our engineering agreement. And with that, our staff is recommending approving the amendments on the Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreement as well as the Construction Engineering Agreement.
All right. Any discussion, motions from the council?
Move.
By Veen, seconded by Cavani. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.5, Cost Participation Maintenance Agreement and Engineering Agreement for Project Number 8078, Advanced Pedestrian Timing on the Columbia Road and 42nd Street Corridors.
Thank you, Vice President Mock. What you have before you is a standard agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation for signal retiming for the 42nd Street and Columbia Road corridors. This signal retiming is also anticipated to includes a leading pedestrian interval, which will end up giving pedestrians a little bit of additional time to get into the crosswalk and become more visible before the other vehicle traffic is given a green light. Overall, the funding on this project, we're receiving about $68,000 in federal aid, and it's being supported with about $7,600 in local funding for this project. Included with this is the engineering agreement with Alliant Engineering, which is a, been a fairly standard go-to on a number of our signal timing here within town. And we've selected them through the qualification-based selection process through the North Dakota Department of Transportation. And with that, staff is recommending approving the agreement and, well, both the Cost Participation and Maintenance Agreement as well as the Engineering Agreement.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, motions? Is that a motion, Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, move approval.
Move approval. Seconded by Cavani. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.6, Transportation Alternatives Funding Discussion.
What you have before you is a detailed information regarding our transportation alternatives program that we have applied for in the past. Overall, the staff report's intended to review and discuss potential federal funding through the transportation alternative program and also to determine what the city council's stance is on this program in the future. Overall, the transportation alternative program has gone through a number of different names and has been merged with other programs in the past. Such other programs included the Transportation Alternative Program, or TOP, the Transportation Enhancements, or TE, Safe Routes to School, as well as some historic projects as well. Overall, for urban settings like Grand Forks, typically, the state has approximately $800,000 to $900,000 in funding available under this program. This program only provides funding for construction only. It does not provide any funding for design or construction engineering. And typically, it's on an 80% federal, 20% local basis for that construction. Overall, the city has been very successful in obtaining funding through this program in the past. In about the last 10 years, we've received approximately $2 million through this program, which is about 23% of the total available throughout the state for urban projects. Now, in order to use these funds, all of the federal funding requirements need to be met, and this includes more. and this includes more detailed project development, environmental documentation, as well as a significantly larger plan set, and more intricate construction inspection documentation. Historically, staff has handled the design engineering for these projects, and more recently in recent years, the construction engineering has been sent out to consultants to handle. Overall, with the changes that have occurred within the program, what we are seeing is that the actual local costs for administering these programs and constructing it, they're getting closer to becoming cost neutral, instead of being more advantageous for us to apply for it. As you can see from the table included in the staff report itself, in 2013 and 2014, if we ended up, when we constructed these projects, we were saving close to $200,000 by doing these projects using this funding. However, as the years have gone on, and we've needed to hire consultants, and the requirements have become a little bit more stringent, these costs have shifted, and in some cases the city has actually paid more to construct these projects than if we were to have constructed these projects locally. More recently, with our Columbia Road project and our University Avenue project, which are currently in development, you can currently see that we are very close to being cost neutral, but we are still seeing some savings by going through the program. Now, with these being cost neutral, there are other aspects that we do need to consider as well, one of which is the amount of staff time and the hours that go into these projects. From what we've been able to determine looking at these historic projects, we're seeing anywhere from 700 to 900 labor hours going into these projects, and of which somewhere between 300 to 700 are staff hours. Now, we've also compared this to other projects that we have done for shared use paths, where we've done them 100% locally, and typically on those projects, for both the design and the construction engineering, we're spending somewhere between 100 to 200 staff hours. So we have a fair amount of information in front of you as to what we're kind of looking at. And overall, what we're kind of looking at as an option moving forward with this program is identifying a preferred 2023 project for a shared use path, and the consideration of using local funding instead of pursuing TA funding on this one. And with that, I would be interested to hear committee's discussion and thoughts on the matter, and I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Just council discussion, Mr. Cavami?
So looking at the hours, it appears that in a cost neutral, it actually ends up costing us more money, just the amount of money we spend internally. So your recommendation is to just completely move away from that for the 2023 plan?
Moving forward in the 2023, it would be a very strong consideration, and that's part of the reason why we've gone through and done this analysis.
If we move away, is there any permanent repercussions? Do we... Is it harder for us to come back and participate in these programs, or?
No, the program itself, it's a competitive-based program, so every year we could end up putting in an application, and if we decide to come back to it later, we certainly could.
Any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Sandy.
Yeah, so I would agree. Mr. Krinko brings up a very valid point, and Mr. Grasser and I actually had discussions about this recently specifically related to the shared use path, the federal money and the federal requirements. I would be one that, of course, I don't want to not put in shared use paths, but I think it's very important for our community. I wonder if we shouldn't try to put a... Some sort of logic to how much money we'd want to spend on a project and then have city staff go and look at it. For example, take the last seven to 10-year average of how much money we've spent locally and say, okay, go and find a project that's approximately that amount of money, and then we, you know, bring it back to us and we can back it. But I, for one, for the amount of money we're spending on shared use paths, it's just... I have a hard time as a taxpayer thinking it makes financial sense spending so much money with federal money, even though we're getting the federal money to put towards these projects. So I'd prefer that we steer away from that, allow our engineering department to find a good project and bring it back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Anyone else? Discussion? Mr. Weber, did you have something you wanted to add?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mock?
Yes, Mr. Veen.
A question. Mr. Krinko, how far out do we have projects planned currently that would be on our future lists? And I don't know, is there an average cost for any of those?
If I understood your question correctly, you were asking about future shared use path projects, is that correct?
That's correct.
Currently, we have two projects that have federal aid associated with them. One is the Columbia Road Shared Use Path, which goes from 40th to 47th. That one is currently scheduled for construction in 2021. The other project we have that has federal funding is on University Avenue, and that goes from 48th Street to the entrance of the Mobile Home Park, just to the west there, and that is scheduled either for construction in 2021 or 2022. Beyond that, the... We did previously apply for a 2022 project, which would have been on 32nd Avenue, west of the interstate going to 48th Street, getting it out to that industrial park and essentially paving that gravel bike path that's currently out there. Beyond that, we don't have any concrete plans as for shared use path projects. Typically, we try to install them as developments go in, or as redevelopment occurs, or as site plans come in and we can install shared use paths where they need be. So beyond that, I don't believe we have any other concrete plans for additional shared use paths. We tend to see what the need is and what some of the desires are, and install shared use paths accordingly.
Then I'll do a follow-up question. What about the long-term maintenance of the shared use plans? Where does the funding come for them? Because we've had a number of these in quite a few years, and sometimes, well, they deteriorate. Do we have... Is there a separate funding source for the maintenance and upgrade of these paths?
I believe we do have a separate funding source for the maintenance activities, and I want to say, and I'm not 100% certain on this, but I believe there is $50,000 that is budgeted annually for bike path maintenance. I believe it's $50,000. I could be incorrect in that one, though. So only to verify that. But we do have a separate funding source for maintaining bike paths, and in the past we have had separate projects that have either overlaid the asphalt bike paths or gone in and done panel replacement on our concrete shared use paths.
Do you know if we have a long-term capital improvement plan for maintenance of these bike paths?
That, I do not believe we do. We tend to address them as the needs arise, and Mr. Grasser is coming up.
Counselman Veen, usually on the transportation alternative program, we usually only look out on that program about three years for a project specific. If you look in the CIP, there's generally dollars budgeted, though, in the capital planning for an unidentified project, so we kind of leave that open, other than the ones that are actually programmed under the State Transportation Improvement Plan. And Mr. Krinko is correct, there are additional dollars in there for bike path maintenance activities.
I just bring that up because I look at the map, and we're developing a really nice map, long-term, and I think that's great for our community, and just important that we also keep them up also.
Yeah, the maintenance needs on bike paths is pretty much equivalent to about what we're dealing with on the street system. Which means we could use more dollars.
Thank you.
Actually, if I may.
Mr. Weber?
These multi-use paths we put in, we generally always put them in as concrete, don't we?
Yes.
As a cyclist, they're just not... They're not comfortable to ride on. They're not attractive to ride on. Generally, I'll ride on the road rather than going bump, bump, bump on sidewalk that moves up and down. And concrete is more expensive than pavement. Now, I recognize with our roads, because of the wear and tear, the concrete, long-term, is actually a savings. But the pavement, even though we're talking about maintenance here, we don't have the same... We don't have truck traffic, we don't have the same wear and tear from snowplows, et cetera. But the way that we've been doing it, I mean, logically, the map looks like it makes sense. You're connecting routes, et cetera. But from a cyclist's perspective, other than along the Greenway, connections between downtown and the university, or along the Cooley, a lot of this just doesn't get used by cyclists very much. The long path along DeMers, for instance, is a major multi-use path. It's not just unappealing, it's kind of distasteful to use as a cyclist. You're out there next to a brown site with the railroad, it's kind of dusty, there's trucks going by very rapidly. So until we come up with more cyclist-friendly multi-use paths, I would tend to agree that the amount of money that we have to spend to attract those federal dollars probably doesn't make sense for us.
Is it possible... So how are we currently budgeting? Are we budgeting a certain amount, or are we applying for a program, and then if we get it, we come up with our local match?
Generally, we program, like every year, every other year, anticipating a federal project. I'd actually have to go back and refresh the current CIP to see where we have that, because I think we did talk about combining some of those dollars together. So they may or may not be segregated in the budget component, but we do... We are keeping separate as far as how we apply those. We continue to target money towards maintenance.
Sure. So it was down to a reason if we wanted to not apply for something in, say, 2023 because we're not seeing a great benefit from the dollar match, we could just budget that and then set our own CIP or our own priorities and either build or maintain what we currently have.
Correct. In essence, what we're doing is we're still programming the equivalent of a federal project. It's just that when we get to the actual application, we'll probably substitute local dollars instead of going through the federal application. I should say, this is also kind of a test period. We'll try that in '23 and/or maybe '24 and just validate, you know, that everything works out the way we envision it right now. We can go back and do TE applications at any point in time that we desire. As Mr. Krinko mentioned, it's an annual application process that we do, and it's for one year at a time.
Is there any benefit to the federal match depending on the size of the project? Is it so much overhead that the smaller projects really almost lose money?
Overall, the project itself, or that program itself, it has a maximum federal component, which is $290,000, and so anything above roughly about $350,000, $360,000, anything above that is 100% city on top of that. The other issue you run into is if you end up running a project that is significantly less, like say it's a project that's only worth $100,000, you'd get $80,000 in federal funds, but you still have all the federal aid requirements associated with it. So what we've been doing in the past is we've been trying to target that maximum $290,000 and try to sit up... Find a sweet spot of a project around anywhere from about $325,000 to about $375,000. Plus, in addition to that, you also have to look at projects that are going to rank highly, because it is a competitive grant process, which makes it doubly difficult. So you have to find something that works financially and something that's also going to rank highly.
If I could add one more thing that I think an advantage of using the local dollars. It's not so much on the TE project, we run into it more on others, but once we start going down and establishing a project scope, as Mr. Krinko said, we've got a maximum federal cap when we're awarded these things. So if our scope changes and some anticipated... Unanticipated costs come up, we end up still having to do the scope of the project and supplementing that with local dollars. If these turn into a locally funded project, we're able to then go back and sculpture our budget back to a project scope, instead of having the process drive us into bringing additional dollars in at the last minute.
So are you looking for more direction from council? Is this enough for the discussion? Do you need us to make a formal motion?
Well, at this point in time, staff is recommending that council directs engineering to identify the preferred 2023 project, and then bring it back for approval with consideration of using local funding in lieu of applying for a TA fund.
Okay. Is there a motion to concur?
I'll make that motion.
Ken will make that motion. Is there a second? Ms. Dockler, seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you, engineering, for all your work tonight. Item 2.7, Public Works Street Division Contingent Snow Hauling 2021 Winter Season.
Good evening, Vice President Mock, members of the committee and council. This has become an annual item for us, a contingency plan for the street division. We received one bid on August 18th from Gawain Construction. This contingent snow removal option would be utilized only as needed and pre-authorized by the Public Works Operations Division, and with payment from the street maintenance budget. And as part of our continuity of services planning with COVID-19, we've just expanded the number of units here, the number of machines that we may be able to draw upon should we need to do that, and hopefully not, but it is a contingency plan for us. In the past, as noted in the staff report, we have utilized this mainly for snow hauling on corners as snow has accumulated and really blocked the vision for the traveling public and those kind of things. So we use it selectively and only if necessary. And if so, and we incur some expenses, we typically consult with the finance department when we commence, and then also provide interim reports to them. And then should we require a budget amendment for that street department budget, we would be back to this body to request approval for that. And with that, we request to approve the bids as a contingent option with Gawain Construction for the year 2020 and 2021 winter season.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cavami?
Just curious if you received any feedback, why you didn't get any more bids?
I think the... What we've had over the years, we've had a couple of different bidders over the years, actually three, over the years that I've been involved with this, and so it comes and goes a little bit, but Gawain, most recently, the last three years, has been the bidder and the successful bidder. I think the range of equipment and the time of year and those kind of things play into the capabilities and the commitment to be available throughout the winter season.
Any other discussion? Any motions? Motion by Sandy, second by Cavami. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Item 2.8, Federal Transportation Authority Authorizing Resolution. Good evening.
Vice President Mock, members of the committee, we'll have the next three for you, but the first one we have is an authorizing resolution that we have to update since we had a new change in administration. We have to now provide them the new documents that are signed by the city auditor stating that the mayor and his designee have the right to execute and file applications for federal grants or federal assistance grants on behalf of the City of Grand Forks. So these need to be updated since we have a new mayor and also a new city attorney.
All right, is there a motion? Motion by Cavami, second by Dockler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 2.9, Acceptance of North Dakota Section 5339 and 5310 Federal Funding Award.
Again, the same thing here. This is our annual grant application that we applied for back in April, and we got notified of the funding that we did receive for both the 5339 capital grant and also a 5310 grant for seniors and mobility. Out of the grant...
Out of the grants there, we had $290,432 for capital funding for the facility, some updated projects that we have, that we have going out there, some vehicles that we need to get all updated, and it should take care of us. The other one is a 5310 funding, and that is actually two separate grants out of that one. One of them pays for the wages and benefits for the mobility manager that we have, and then the other part of it is to replace two of our current dollar-eyed vehicles that have exceeded their life cycle.
Any discussion? Any comments or questions? Motion by Weber, second by Dockler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210, Professional Services Agreement for Architectural Engineering Design and Construction Services for Project Number 7942, Bus Maintenance Facility Rehabilitation, Project Phase Two.
This is another project. This is part of the grant fund that you just gave approval for. This is one of the projects that are in there. What we have here is an agreement to continue doing the second phase of our project for our building out there, which would upgrade the wash bay and the fueling system, taking the tanks from underground and putting them towards the back of the building. I did not provide you, but I will email to all the councilmen tomorrow, the drawing plan, that was a preliminary one, that we had done a while ago. And this would be to get us design documents, it is not construction documents. This is the first phase. Then we can start applying for the federal funds to do this project. And that's what this here grant agreement, I mean, this agreement is, is to provide the professional services that we need to get started with these drawings.
Any discussion? Mr. Cavami.
Just have a few questions. So this project is a continuation of the original contract from 2018?
Yes.
Is that correct? So there's not been any construction that has spawned from the 2018 contract?
No, there has not been.
So it's just been a pause since then?
It's been a pause since we had it.
Okay, so next question, so you, I had some questions for you earlier. $4.3 million is the approximate budget.
That is what I'm estimating it's going to end up costing us.
Okay. And looking at the design fees, so I'm, you know, I'm in that world, so I like to look at the numbers, I like to look at how it breaks down. So if you're looking at a $4.3 million project, we've got design fees at $417,000. So our project cost is roughly $3.8 million. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, that's about right.
So, you know, that's inclusive of civil, that's inclusive of all the different professions, right?
Yes.
But looking at that fee, I'm just curious how you came to that fee? What was the process? Because that's a 10.7% fee, just based on my calculations, and I just want to walk through that.
Okay. The estimate that I, is what I put together as to roughly what it's going to cost, just kind of looking at what we previously had, the square footage of the building and stuff, trying to figure out those costs, that's where I came up with the estimate of $4.3 million. That was not done by JLG or anything.
Sure.
And so I asked them to just kind of give me a preliminary number that we would need to start doing this project, so we can get the design documents. Then we can go after the actual construction documents after we get the funding that's been awarded to us, and that would be taken into consideration when we do the project. So the costs have not been nailed down by myself or anybody else reviewing this at all.
Sure, but the contract does have a fixed amount, and it does have those dollar amounts already in there.
Yeah.
So it's not contingent on construction cost?
No.
So, you know, just in my world, that's a really high fee. I mean, I don't know if there's any checks or balances between engineering or how we come about this. You know, then we look, so there's a $75,000 grant award management fee?
Okay.
So that's to, you can just explain what that's for.
Yeah, and that was in the previous document, the one that I had emailed to you earlier, was the 2018 document.
Yep.
What that's for is so that we can have the company turn around and provide us the written documentation for maintenance and stuff that we need on our building. We have to have a facility maintenance plan for that building. And currently, I'm the only one there. I don't have the time to sit and write that complete document.
Absolutely.
So yes, we contracted that out.
Sure, and totally understand that. So I guess my question is, I know that they went through a competitive process to be hired, right?
Yes.
There was an RFQ process, I'm familiar with that. I'm just curious, who's sitting at the table when the fee is proposed? Is it just you? Is it you and Todd? Who's, who are the people that are saying, yep, that fee makes sense, we're good to go?
This current professional services agreement was done just by me.
Okay, all right.
So yeah, we have not gotten to the actual, what is it going to cost us for construction? What is your fees for it? Because I do need to figure that out before we move forward.
But it's in there? It's in there?
Yep.
So it's not tied to construction at all?
No, it is not.
So in my world, I'd like to see a fee tied to construction, so that way, if the project grows, the designers or the consultants are compensated adequately.
If I could, I think would be good in this case, and I agree with Councilmember Cavami, is that since this is a preliminary engineering agreement, we don't know the full scope. And I know a lot of times architects and engineers want to take you from planning all the way through construction, I get that. So what I would do is, if I could ask to have this authorized just through this initial, we'll call it preliminary engineering, planning and preliminary engineering with this fee, and then we'd come back for further phases, once we have an identified, more of an identified scope and project at this point in time. But I think it's $111,000 will at least get us so that we can get to a federal grant-
Sure.
-with all that. But I would stop short there, and I wouldn't approve all the rest of the agreement, and I would just include this phase of the agreement.
And I think the 25% of the total fee is an adequate amount to get to that point. No issues there, but I do have an issue just approving this contract as is. So I would say I would approve a contract that holds us accountable for Phase One, $110,000. But beyond that, I'd want to have somebody at the table to discuss this. Just, you know, my world, that's a huge fee. So just as taxpayer dollars, I want to-
I would highly recommend that, because I'm not familiar with all-
Sure, sure. And I'm way biased, so someone like Ken is a perfect person to have that person where you can bounce that, those numbers off of. Or anybody that Todd thinks makes sense.
Sure.
So with that, I would ask if you're so inclined to, just to approve the agreement through the, I'll call it, the planning and pre-engineering up to that dollar amount of $111,000.
$111,000.
$111,000 to that. And anything beyond that, you're going to see a project come back anyway with a parallel agreement for professional services.
I'd make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Veen. Any further discussion? Todd, when that comes forward in previous phases, will we have a competitive bid on that work? Or are we just going to see it and have another opportunity to discuss?
You'll have competitive construction bids.
Okay.
We'll negotiate, presuming that JLG does a good job and we want to further recommend them for further phases, you'd have a negotiated fee that'd be associated with a more specific project that we want to go to actually bidding phase with it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item 211, COVID-19 Update and Briefing. Mr. Phelan, you're going to start?
I am going to start. So this evening, Councilmember, or Council Vice President Mock and members of City Council, we're going to kind of, an assortment, I'm going to break it into three areas, and maybe after we get through each area, we could stop and then go to the next area. The first area is going to be the Mayor's Expert Panel, we're going to have some discussion on that. I'm going to brief what we've been working on with that. I'm going to ask, Mayor Burcheski is going to provide some thoughts, and then we're going to shift it to Councilmember Weber, who's done a lot of facilitating on this panel discussion. And then I'm really thankful that we have Dr. Peterson here tonight, who's an ultra-pediatrician, also on the staff of the University of North Dakota School of Medicine and Health Sciences, to discuss children. And as part of this kind of panel discussion, there's been a lot of discussion, especially with K-12 schools starting out and what that all means. So she's going to do a capstone on that, and then we'd open up for that. The second part of this is the Health Officer Dashboard, and Michael Doolitz is here from Public Health, and also Mark Schill, they've been doing a lot of work, and we know data is important, locally driven, and all these different metrics. So they're going to brief some further things that we've worked on in that piece. The final piece, Councilmember Mock, you asked for, you know, what's our workforce safety? And the most important thing that the mayor and I do is the health and safety of our city employees. So kind of what we're looking at with our own employees and the different color categories, and giving an update kind of how our workforce is doing as we move forward with that. So with that, I'll kick this thing off. We've had a really terrific group that's worked with this expert panel and staff that supported it. I just want to hit a few high points on the particular document. The group really has highlighted local relevance, local control, and that's, we've talked a lot about that specifically related to data. They really confirm that with a regional and national perspectives. And I think when Mr. Doolitz and Mr. Schill have talked about it, they've shown our local data with various regional and national sources. So I think we're really doing well on that. The dashboard, I think, even when we talk to the state of North Dakota, they've really assisted Burley County, and Morton County, and Cass County, and a lot of data. A lot of the stuff we've done locally is really mirrored what they've done to help. So we should really feel good about that, and we're trying to make it better and better each week that we come here as part of the show. But I think it's really important, we have institutional partners meeting, and some of our partners would like to have a dashboard or some sort of thermometer that would tell them exactly what to do. And what we try to say, and I think what our professionals, our experts have said, it's one component part of decision-making. I think that's what our governor has said, certainly public health is important, but the economy, legal perspective, social dynamics, it all go into decision-making. Most importantly, we need elected leaders to make tough decisions. And there's going to be no substitute for some formula to substitute local leadership. So I think that's confirmed. The thread across ages, as I said, Dr. Peterson's going to discuss that, that's been widely discussed. And with our current peaks that we have right now, a lot of that's driven by that 20 to 29 age group, and I think Mr. Doolitz and Ms. Swanson's here to talk about that, that's really driven with that, with young people, and or close contact with children. We're hearing that in our workplaces, and so really that age thing is a really significant issue that we have. Our economy, and we've said this from the very start, if you were here in March, our public health and economic health are linked together, and there's not one or the other, it's an "and" strategy that we should really be pressing. We bought time, so there's a lot of discussion in here, we bought time so that we have better treatment, better research, better testing, and maybe all three of those aren't as good as they should be in the United States of America, but at least we bought some time so that when we're here in August, we're much better off than we were in March. So we have bought some time as we move forward. Some policy recommendations, you know, the social distancing has been very important. And as we've talked a lot about, face coverings or masks are really important, too. And so that's recognized here as one of the recommendations. The testing and contact tracing, and so really the testing we've talked a lot about, Mr. Schill has provided a lot of briefings on that. The Public Health Department is doing a really robust job contact tracing, and you can about imagine, after all the cases, they're really, it's an all-in kind of process. And that's what you've allowed us to fund, a lot of temporary personnel for contact tracing. And I know UND's hired some contact tracers. We need to support the Grand Forks School Districts with contact tracing, so it's really a unified approach that we need to work on. And specifically with, I think even in our report, and I think Mr. Doolitz will confirm this, I think it's one-third or asymptomatic, and so all these measures we're trying to do is because there are a lot of people walking around asymptomatic. Finally, with the conclusions, the importance of Altru, and the health of Altru is critically important, because without a strong health system as our backbone, as we thought back in March, we'd be under a lot of risk. And as Mr. Doolitz goes through the color components, we could have really good scores, we could be all in green, but if our Altru health system's in red, it may not matter what all the greens are. So really, Altru health system is a critically important backbone for, a piece of infrastructure for us to sustain ourselves. With that, I turn it over to Mayor Burcheski, and I really appreciate Mayor Burcheski. He's got a certain mindset, he's got a certain way that he thinks things should go, but he's open-minded enough to have people on this panel that probably are not completely in alignment with what he thinks. And so I think it's been a really lot of robust discussion, and I appreciate Mayor's brought that to the table.
Yeah, I think I would just like to, you know, have a big thank you to a lot of the members of this panel that were willing to give up 90 minutes of their Tuesday evenings over the last couple of months, and there was some really great conversation there. So I guess I could start with that. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Bassan, Dr. Bradley, Dr. Ahmed, Mr. Giezi, and then also Deb Swanson, Mark Schill, Michael Doolitz, and Dr. Wallace for their work in this. And most importantly, I'd like to thank Councilmember Brett Weber. He really was a driving force to put this together, and we've got some really good information and a really good insight from some really intelligent people. You know, I've been very excited to see the community really getting behind the mask-wearing, and you're seeing them, you know, nearly everywhere now, and a lot of businesses have been stepping up, so it's been great to see. And, you know, with that, just a big thank you to the group.
And I think before we ask Dr. Peterson to come up, I know Mr. Weber also, thanks for all your facilitation in keeping those meetings going, and oftentimes, we think, before we start at 6:30, what are we going to talk about? We end up using all the time, and it's been productive time. So I think if you wouldn't mind saying some words, and then I'll ask Dr. Peterson to come up to-
Actually, go ahead, please.
Okay. Dr. Peterson.
And how do I turn this slide? Oh, got it. Okay, got it. Okay, we'll start here. Good evening, Vice President Mock, and thank you for having me, council members, chamber members. I am Dr. Jennifer Peterson, and I'm a pediatrician at Altru Health System. I have been in Grand Forks since 2011. I actually grew up here, so as a child, I grew up here and went to the grand old lady right next door, graduated in 1989, so that's how old I am. I am glad to be living in Grand Forks, and especially when this whole pandemic started, I was more than happy to be in a rural state. So you can never say enough about that. You just feel comfortable and be happy that you live in a place where things don't go kind of crazy and make you super nervous all the time. And we have a great town and a great state to live in, so I'm thankful for that. As the slide says, I do work at the medical school as well. I work with third-year medical students, and I'm one of the pediatric clerkship directors, which I take that job very seriously. It's actually quite refreshing to work with medical students. They have fact-checked my talk tonight, and they did not find any errors in it, so we'll see how this goes. Okay, so to make it light, this is the history of COVID-19. So you'll see me refer to this virus as coronavirus, COVID-19, and you'll also hear SARS-CoV-2. So this virus has a lot of different names. If it was discovered, or if the first case was reported literally one day later, it might have been COVID-20. So it's COVID-19, and in the world of medicine, that is actually a brand-new virus, as you all know. In January, we just first got the genetic material for this virus. So that's actually quite fast in the world of evolution of viruses and virology. To be able to make a PCR test as fast as we did is actually quite incredible. In January 20th, the first case was confirmed in the United States. We all kind of sat back and said, okay, fine, starting in March, we're going to calm down, we're not going to go to school, our kids are going to stay home, and we're going to watch Netflix. Maybe you didn't watch that show, but I think it affected all of us, right? We all have a memory of at least hearing about it. And what we heard on the press conferences was 15 days to slow the curve. So now 15 days has literally turned into 160 days, and we have to figure out a way to live with this virus. So hopefully I can explain to you what this virus does to children and how we can live with it. So, speaking about children, and that's who I see every day, I see infant children and adolescents. I don't take care of adults in medicine, my practice is limited to children. I can tell you that right now, we really don't know the true incidence of the disease in children. I think nationwide and worldwide, we have done a pretty good job of keeping kids at home. I see kids every day in the clinic, I see parents every day in the clinic talking about their kids, and you would actually be surprised at the number of people that really have limited their lives to a significant degree since March. Some parents, this is the first time coming into the clinic with their child, that they've had their children out of the house. And that just, to me, seems really kind of crazy, right? I mean, we've been keeping our kids inside for a long time. It's time to get them out, but we need to figure out how to get them out safely. So if you look at the United States population, children comprise 22% of the US population. And looking at the 2020 census in North Dakota, that's actually quite similar, so children comprise about 22% of the North Dakota census, too. But interestingly, as of early August, only 7% of cases of SARS-CoV-2 were children. So is that going to change when our kids get out of the house and they go to school? Yes. And I'm not saying all kids stayed home, because I saw plenty of kids playing outside this summer. Thank you so much for opening the swimming pool, so that there could at least be an the swimming pool so that there could at least be an opportunity for them to do things safely. And hopefully, they did social distance. I can tell you, the teenagers did not do a very good job of social distancing, and neither are our young adults, as you know from the numbers. But what we can say about children is that the children that do get coronavirus or COVID-19, they have a much lower incidence of hospitalization than adults do. So that makes us feel good. When we see viruses, we deal with influenza all the time. Children have a very high incidence of hospitalization from influenza when you compare them to adults. They tend to get sick, and they tend to get complications of it. So that's why we like the influenza vaccine. Now, as far as what happens, though, is that of the children that get admitted, one in three need intensive care. And that's really quite unusual. So in Grand Forks, we don't have a pediatric intensive care unit. So our children that would need intensive care would end up probably going to Fargo or maybe to Minneapolis or maybe to Rochester, to Mayo. So if one in three that are getting admitted are needing intensive care, that's concerning. That tells me that those kids come in pretty sick. A new study that was just published this weekend detailed some viral loads for children in the United States, and they were looking mostly in Boston, Massachusetts at a hospital called Mass General. They showed that children actually have quite high viral loads in their nose, in their mouths, the first day or two that they get the virus. They have very high viral loads, much higher than actually the adults in the intensive care units. So that's really interesting. They don't seem to be spreading the virus as much, we think, or we just haven't had the children out and about. So we will find this out very quickly. I think as school starts, as college starts, we will really find out how fast do children and young adults spread the virus. Many children that have the virus, as you know, are asymptomatic. So that can be sometimes up to 45% of children, which is a lot. Okay, so now, when I see this little thing up in the top corner, and maybe it's hard to tell by the picture, not the world's best picture, I apologize, it's a motorcycle. All right. So when you guys hear the word Kawasaki, do you think of a motorcycle or a jet ski? You probably don't think of the same thing that I do in pediatrics. And what I think of is a disease that's called Kawasaki disease. Kawasaki syndrome is another name for it. There is a condition called Kawasaki disease that we've had going, we've known about this for a long time. So at least 20 years in pediatrics, longer than that, I'm sure. But I can tell you that in the last 20 years that I've been practicing, the treatment for that really has not changed a whole lot. We knew about the disease. We knew it happened. We knew it was a post-inflammatory condition. And the treatment is basically about the same as it was 20 years ago. Now, enter COVID-19, and here comes a new disease that's very similar to Kawasaki's, but the kids get a little sicker. So for Kawasaki disease, the kids that get that, there's about a 5% pediatric intensive care unit admission rate. And for multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, which is a syndrome that happens, we think, due to COVID-19, they have a much higher incidence of pediatric intensive care admission. So this disease was first described in the United Kingdom, and then Italy, France, and then finally in the United States when COVID-19 hit New York. They had, it's now gone to the point where this disease has been reported in 42 states. So nothing in North Dakota at this point. But we do get cases of Kawasaki syndrome in North Dakota. And I can't tell you exactly how many per year, but our guess is, as pediatricians at Altru, we would say probably three to five per year. Very few of them require intensive care. That could be different with multi-system inflammatory syndrome. So the case definition for it is that they have to have a fever, and they have to have evidence of multi-system organ dysfunction. And there's usually a variety of other symptoms, too. But one of the concerning things is these children present in shock. And so they present very sick, and they can have cardiac dysfunction, which equals sick in my world, right? And they usually need fluids and vasopressive agents, and that usually means they have to be in a pediatric intensive care. The good news is the overall mortality of it is relatively low. And as long as patients are recognized early, they are treated and they do well. I didn't put any pictures of children being sick up here because nobody wants to see pictures of sick kids. Everybody wants to see pictures of healthy, happy kids, right? And when you think about it, if you have a child that's managed in a pediatric intensive care unit, the last thing you want is a picture of your child being put up on a board or a bulletin. So anyway, the special things about this syndrome is that it happens about four weeks after the disease. So we don't see it right away when we see cases of COVID-19 in our community, but we tend to see it about four weeks later. And what we see is very high inflammatory markers. So there are special things that we look at as doctors that help us to determine how much inflammation is going on in this patient's body. Those numbers are sky-high. And they can also have, like I said, the evidence of the cardiac dysfunction. And many of the children also have some stomach symptoms as well, meaning GI symptoms. So it's not that they have the disease, it's that they have had the disease, they've recovered from the disease, and now they have a post-inflammatory condition that we feel is secondary to the disease. So it's kind of tricky and interesting. And I just want you guys to know that when we talk about children and we talk about coronavirus, we talk about an awful lot of kids who don't really get that sick, right? So half the kids you see might not even get sick at all, ever. But there is a small subset, and it's not a large subset, it's a rare number, but there are kids that do get sick. And we've had, in the United States so far, as of like the middle of August, I think were the last numbers the CDC published, they said that about 600 children have been affected in the United States. 17 in the state of Minnesota, one in South Dakota, and so far, zero in North Dakota. Be great to keep it that way. So if we could do the social distancing, encourage good hand washing, and see if we can not get kids as sick this year, that would be great. But kids have to go to school. And so we have to start school, and we have to figure out how to do it safely. So I propose that we do the best that we can. The numbers are here in our community, and they're not dropping. We need to follow public health's recommendations to slow the spread. And typically, like I said, children do well with the disease. Even healthy children that have no pre-existing medical conditions can still come down with the multi-system inflammatory condition. So it is important. It's also important to keep our healthy kids healthy, but also our kids with medical conditions healthy. So we'll work as a community to keep everyone healthy, and hopefully that does the job for us, right? I don't think this illness is going away anytime soon. So we all have to figure out how to live with it. I have references up here, and I'm open for questions if anyone has any.
Thank you so much. Todd, do you want to take a break now and ask questions if people have it? Okay, any discussion, Mr. Weber?
Yes, if I may. Dr. Peterson, thank you for being here. The last couple of weeks when I hear Kawasaki, I no longer think of motorcycles. I'm thinking about this now. So that's serious and something for us to be aware of. But you also mentioned the high viral load. And yet, there isn't currently a direct connection between that high viral load and increased infection rates around them. But we don't really know that yet. But these little kids are carrying around a lot of virus when they do have it. It seems to grow in them. Are there studies going on to help us connect the dots on that, if that is going to lead to higher rates of spread?
Yep, absolutely. So there is a pediatric hospitalist work group that's, they basically have a large multi-center study going on. And I don't know exactly how many centers are involved with it. But I think as schools are starting, there's ongoing concern that this virus may spread through the schools. And I think we will find out very quickly if that's happening. So we'll be looking for that multi-center study, and we'll also be looking at what's happening to regional and, you know, local numbers as the schools start. I can tell you that one of the best things that happened in March is we had a really bad influenza year. We had a lot of kids get sick. And it's not that it was bad that people were in the hospital being very ill. It was just a lot of people, a lot of numbers, a lot of kids in the clinic. And closing the schools in mid-March put an almost immediate stop, almost an immediate halt to our influenza numbers in the community. It was amazing how fast it slowed down. And I don't want to close school all the time. But it just showed me that these little kids going around school, they are spreading germs. So if we can figure out a way for them to stop spreading germs but still be in school, that would be ideal.
And our behaviors can have a tremendous impact on the infection rates.
Correct.
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks again for being here.
Yep.
Is there any research on or any way to know chances of mutation of the disease that maybe children would be more susceptible?
Um, boy, that's a tough question. It's probably a little bit above and beyond me to look at like virus mutation. But we do know that viruses mutate with time. And that's part of the reason why we have a different influenza vaccine come out every year, is because these viruses mutate and change. In the past, coronavirus was really not a very scary virus. We learned about it in med school. It was this cute little virus that had little crowns on it. Oops, sorry. And it just didn't really scare us. And then all of a sudden came SARS and MERS and now COVID-19. So is there potential for this virus to change and mutate? Absolutely. I would certainly not be the expert to talk about that, though.
If I may, from discussions with the expert panel, and Dr. Wallace could speak to this more specifically, apparently, there are more than a dozen, maybe even dozens, of mutations. But so far, they don't seem to have provided any particular need for further concern than what we already have. But that could change at any time because mutations do continue to occur.
Another question I had was, with teenagers, are they more like the young children where they're not seeing as severe symptoms? Or are they a little bit more like the young adults where we see almost more like adult symptoms? Because I'm concerned about the children, but also about the staff that they'll be around every day and potentially spreading, too.
Sure. The infection that I spoke about, the multi-system inflammatory syndrome, is largely between the ages of one year and 16 years. And so we tend to not see that syndrome in older people. And we don't know why. I wish, we will maybe someday. The average age for that syndrome is eight, eight years. So when you look at teenagers, they seem to do an awful lot, they have symptoms very similar to the young adults. And so things that can affect them might be medical problems that they already have that might make them have a more severe disease. But overall, they seem to do pretty well with it. Large numbers of them are asymptomatic. If they have symptoms, it tends to be just a couple days of fever and usually not, you know, sick for long periods of time. But I think we just don't have enough data yet of exactly how each age group does with it. But we can say that largely under age 60, people do better. And then if you have medical conditions, pre-existing conditions, you do worse.
And then one last question from me. So during the cold and flu season, so what is the plan as we have little kids with runny noses and coughs, like four months on end? Do you, schools, parents, just take them in for COVID tests every other week? Or how are we-
Well, this is a great question. So if you, the million-dollar question, right? Because if anybody in this room has a child, you know that your children have runny noses a lot. And if you're a teacher, you know that children have runny noses a lot. We can't keep kids out of school for everything. So I think what it's going to take is, you know, if it's an obvious thing that's noticeable to the teacher and distractable to the class, then that child probably does need to be evaluated. If they've been evaluated several times and they don't have COVID, well, maybe that rhinorrhea is due to something else. So I think we're going to see a lot of that this year. I'm not going to be doing COVID tests on everybody that comes in with a runny nose. I will be doing it on some of them. And I think my partners would be doing the same.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Anybody on the phone with questions?
Yeah, Ms. Mock?
Yes, Mr. Sandy.
Sorry, Dr. Peterson, I apologize for not being there in person. It's always nice to be with you. I'm going to put you on the spot, and I'm really sorry about this. But during your commentary, you mentioned that you believe it's important that kids go to school. Can you please elaborate on that?
Okay, I'm happy to elaborate on that. So I want to make sure I got your question right. You said that during my talk, I said that it's important to keep kids in school? And then you want me to elaborate on that? Or tell me-
Why do you think, yes, why do you think that's important?
Okay, why do I think it's important to keep kids in school? Well, I think we all saw the effects of what happened between March and May when we went to distance learning. We had a lot of children that felt very frustrated with the way that that went. Obviously, it was a sudden change, and it wasn't expected by anybody. There was a huge variety in the way that kids were taught. So what was happening at grade schools might have been different than middle school, might have been different than high school. And even class to class, one teacher might have done something drastically different than another. And I think that, you know, just for the child, for the mental health of the child, I think it's important for them to be able to get back into what's normal for them in order for them to have good social, emotional development, and also to continue their education. I think those are important things. Kids need each other. They need people. They need exposures to people, meaning good, quality role models. And there's just certain things that are lacking with distance learning. I know that this summer, the American Academy of Pediatrics put out a recommendation that kids should be in school, so let's try to do everything we can to make it work. And there's also speaking of, you know, people that, kids that don't have adequate meals at home. I'm not saying that schools should feed people all the time. But I know that we work very hard, and I know there are some children that are hungry at home. And so I think there's a lot of things that play into it. It's not just the learning, it's the social and emotional development, it's the mental health of the children. It's their health, their overall health, I think that's important. Did I answer your question okay, Dana?
Yeah, could I jump in and add something to that?
Yes, absolutely.
And have you checked it out? So we also have a sense, as social workers, that rates of domestic violence and child abuse are likely going up, even though reporting is going down. One of the main sources for that reporting potential is school. So there's a strong sense that these things are happening, and we're not knowing about it. The school provides an opportunity for us to learn about them.
Yep, and completely agree with that as well. There is, there's concern about that, whether or not it's actually happening. I think it probably is happening and just not getting reported. And so I think that, I did a very informal survey this summer, didn't do a research on it or anything. But I can tell you that every child I saw this summer, except for maybe two, and I see a lot of kids in the clinic, maybe two said that distance learning was great. But then when they said that, their parent looked at them like they were crazy. So most of the children told me that it wasn't fun. They didn't enjoy it. They didn't like sleeping in. They felt like their days and nights were getting mixed up. They, you know, felt isolated. And some of the funnest things that happened were when the teachers would figure out a way to make something exciting in their Zoom session, something as simple as like bringing a little treat to their house and just leaving it on their doorstep. I mean, they crave that social interaction. And I think it's important that kids get it as safe as they can.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So this isn't so much a question for you, Dr. Peterson, but maybe just, in saying that schools are a huge part of our social fabric, which is absolutely true, I firmly believe that our public education system is a barometer for how healthy our community is, how our kids are doing, how engaged they are, all of those things. But I do think that what COVID has made very apparent in the absence of schools being able to be open is that we, as a community, and this isn't just Grand Forks, this is nationwide, that we, as a community, need to work on better social structures so that if something like this happens, which the cat is out of the bag now, this is going to happen in the future. We need to figure out a new normal. And part of that is going to be making sure that our community is protected, and that we're protecting our most vulnerable populations, like our children. So that if something like this happens again, and schools are shut down for months, we have mandated reporters in all areas that understand what they need to do in order to protect children and in order to protect abused family members that may need somebody to disclose to as well. Because it's not just children that disclose at schools, it's also their parents that feel safe and go there and disclose what's going on so that they can get assistance. That also is for food. Kitsona has stepped up and given away backpacks for families that have needed it in a couple different giveaways recently. And food, and not just Kitsona, but also other entities in town. Spuds Jr. and all these other restaurants are stepping in to do this. But I think that we, as a city, need to look at that and see what we're doing and what structures we're supplying and supporting our families with in the community to make sure that we're capturing this, make sure that we're giving people the opportunities to feel safe and access the services that they need. Because a lot of this, I think, falls on schools, falls on teachers. And teachers will pour their hearts out in the classroom. Social workers, administration, I have no doubt that that is the entire school system. However, that's also not what they're trained for. Teachers aren't trained social workers or licensed social workers. They're not trained child psychologists. They're not educationally equipped to fill all of those services. And so then we, as a community, need to look at that and address how it fills the gaps. So this is a conversation aside to itself, and this COVID one is going to go much longer, I'm sure. But that's just something that I think that we, as a city, really need to start thinking about and addressing in how we structure our services to people and what we think about how our community should be and behave and act.
Excellent. Thank you. Any, oh, Mr. Weber?
No.
Oh.
Looking at the people on the phone.
Anyone on the phone? Hearing none? Oh, who's that? Oh, who's that?
Hi, it's Dana.
Oh, Mr. Sandy.
Just, Dr. Peterson, again, I really appreciate it. I agree with you. Keeping kids in school is probably one of the most important things that we as public officials can do. It's just for the mental health of not only the kids but the poor parents that are at home trying to, trying to teach and deal with these things. I think we need to have a good strategy and make the decisions that help, help students stay in school. So I really, as always, I really appreciate your assistance locally in Grand Forks and I hope you and your family are all well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Mr. Phelan?
We're going to go to phase two, but thanks, thank you to Dr. Walls to get Dr. Peterson here and, and thanks for your community service tonight. That was, that was remarkable and well done. And that came out of the expert panel, getting somebody here this evening. So I thought that was, on a, on a Monday night at city council, you did awfully well. And I feel a fellow kinship, I'm a 1989 grad from Manda High, so I feel like we have a kinship now. So with that, I don't know how the fellows are going to do this, we've got Michael Doolitz and Mr. Shiel here, and I'm going to turn it over to them with some data stuff they've been doing. So I'll hand over the podium to there and then we'll put a period once these guys are done. And then we have one more part.
Thanks, Mr. Phelan. Vice President Mock, members of the committee, just a quick update on some of the numbers and the digital tools that we've been building to track the pandemic. This screen here is what is currently available on the city's website, tracking some of the basic raw numbers. So here we've got total cases by day, and the blue line is the daily seven-day average. You can see that's been creeping up fairly steadily since early August. And it looks like it'll probably continue as these two small numbers drop out of this average. I think we'll see that keep going up. Here we've got the similar trend in the positive test percentage overall. It was fairly low down here in early August, around 1%, 0.9% on that seven-day average. Now it's up over four, four and a half as of today. So the green bars here are the daily numbers and the blue is the seven-day average. And here are active cases. You can see we've now surpassed in the county the number of currently active cases ahead of what, what occurred here in late April with the outbreak in the manufacturing plant. I believe according to the state data, of this 296 active cases, 167 are folks in their twenties. So what we're seeing, according to the state's reporting at least, is it's primarily in the younger group, this latest upward swing. And encouragingly, fairly low numbers in those above age 60 at this time. That doesn't mean that that would necessarily continue, however. Next screen here is the total testing numbers. The blue line is the rolling daily average for total tests. You can see that's been going up fairly steadily the last couple weeks, up around 6,000 the last couple days on that average. And then the bottom number here is the unique, new unique individuals tested, again, the weekly average. And that number's coming up again. So roughly 1,800, 1,900 new folks a week in the county being tested. So this is an encouraging number, as we talked about last week. Working with the institutional partners identified 7,500 to 8,000 tests as being perhaps an ideal number, target. So that number is going up, which is a good sign. And then finally here is the current progress on the Grand Forks County Health Officers Dashboard. And so what we've got here is the five criteria developed by Dr. Walls and Mr. Doolitz at Public Health, moving towards the overall index of risk. And so didn't quite get, over here, what we'll put in is a similar dial type of graphic that shows the level between green, yellow, orange, and red. We're currently in orange, very close to red. And you can see the five measures here that make up the index. The first one is the daily cases per day, per 100,000. So we just equalize that to make it comparable. So it's the same chart that was the one I just showed you, but just adjusted for population. Here's that trend. So we're at 50. The red is 25. So we're considerably above that at this time. Second number here is the total tests per 100,000. So you saw that number, the testing here is very good compared to national average. The green level is 2,000 or more and we're at about 8,000 per week. Third one here is four and a half percent positive tests, as we just saw. The, just moved into the orange there, the number there is, the threshold there is 4%. To get to red, we need to get to 10% on a weekly seven-day rolling average. This last one here is we're looking at the change in cases on a week-to-week basis. And so we're looking at what happened this week versus the week before. And so here we can see it's roughly doubled from two weeks ago on a weekly basis to this week. And then finally, the last criterion here is this hospital status. And so we, we're, that's a measure that Altru has helped put together with some level of judgment involved, knowing that it's extremely complex and varies day-to-day on what their capacity is. Our understanding is they've had a fairly high census the last few weeks without regard to COVID, just with general patients. And so that also is a good thing, perhaps, that folks have come back to the hospital and are getting the care they need. But at the same time, it perhaps decreases the amount of headroom that they could sustain should there be some hospitalizations that occur. So my understanding is they're now at the modified level or the, the yellow level as of today. And so this would be the first day for that. And so here, within a couple days, we'll finish this up and get this online as well so that everyone in the community and then the partners can, can track this on a day-to-day basis. So we'll include the trend in the overall index as well as, again, a visual for that. And so as you can see here, we're very close to a red level. To get to red, we would need one of two things to happen. One would be the positive test to get over 10% or the hospital status to move up to the third level, which would be orange. We're close enough, I believe, Mr. Doolitz, that either one of those things occurring would put us, according to this system, again, developed by Dr. Walls and Mr. Doolitz, along with a lot of feedback from the expert panel that's been meeting, as well as the institutional partners, Altru, the county, UND, and Public Health and the Air Force as well. And so that's our general update. You can see, as you know, things are growing in general and we're now at an orange status overall. I don't know if you have anything to add to that? Okay, great.
So Council, Vice President Mock and members of the committee, I'm Michael Doolitz. I'm the opioid response project coordinator in normal times, and I've been working with COVID data in our COVID era. So I'm going to do an update based off of some of the slides that I've been showing previously. And then Mark did a really good job at showing the progress that he's made on the, kind of the publicly available dashboard. And I'll touch just a tiny bit on that, but I, I'm very thankful for all of Mark's work to get it online and get it in a form that's easily consumed because that was really the idea behind the dashboard, was to make it something that could be easily consumed by anybody in the community and they could use it to, you know, kind of as a tool to assess their risk. So looking at our Grand Forks County new cases, this past weekend was very difficult. Unfortunately, it was also the weekend that I was the case manager for contact tracing, so a lot of very long days the past few days. And unfortunately, you know, I, I hate to share this with you, but that number is going to be even higher tomorrow. I've been watching over the course of this meeting, and when I walked in here, we were at 86 cases in Grand Forks County, which would have been a record for new cases, and now we're at 104 cases, new cases identified today. So that number is unfortunately on an upward swing and 104 is definitely a record for the number of new cases. Prior to this weekend, it was, I believe, in the 60s. I just wanted to touch a little bit on looking at the data related to the testing in the past week. There's obviously been a lot of testing that has gone on with the start of UND. And so I just wanted to do a little bit of a breakdown. Of course, you know, a very large, probably, you know, up, you know, well over 75% of the test results were in that 20 to 29 age group. But, you know, anytime you have a lot of positives in a younger age group, you always worry, you know, what percentage of them are going to be asymptomatic versus symptomatic? And we found that a very large number of them have been symptomatic, even more so than what our normal average is. So, you know, in the data that I had available between 423 and 824, about 70% of the cases in Grand Forks County had, or were considered to be symptomatic or pre-symptomatic. So pre-symptomatic, meaning they didn't have symptoms when we first talked to them and then developed symptoms over the course of their isolation. And then in the past week, we've seen 79% among all of the cases that we've had. So it's not just that we're identifying asymptomatic people, we've definitely identified spread among UND students. You know, there's been some hotspots that we've identified and some communities that have, that have seemed to contribute to it. And I think we're going to keep seeing an increase in cases because of, kind of in the wake, because that, you know, when you identify a cluster, you're, you'll identify kind of the, you know, the child cases to that, so the people that they exposed, and then you'll generate additional cases, just like we saw with the manufacturing plant. Looking at testing, one thing I did want to add, now that we have some more robust information from the state, I was able to get a little bit of information regarding the unique positivity for the tests that were administered, you know, kind of related to the opening of UND. So on the 18th, you know, the 18th through the 29th, I do have information on the unique positivity. So that's positives divided by unique tests, and the percent positivity was quite high, you know, considering that it was essentially intended to be a surveillance testing event and we're finding numbers to be this high. The serial positivity obviously was on the lower side. Taking a look at our comparison to our metro areas, I did have to change the scale unfortunately, which is obviously, you know, a little bit of a concerning sign. Here's Grand Forks County, and this is active cases per 100,000. So we're at 441 active cases per 100,000 in the community right now. And we'll compare that to Ward County, which has seen a similar increase but nowhere near in the scope. Cass County has kind of leveled off from where they were at at their peak. We did surpass Burley Morton today for the number of active cases per 100,000, and tomorrow we'll be well above Burley Morton. The North Dakota rate kind of encompassing everybody, and then that Royal Grand Forks area rate, which I wasn't able to update by meeting time. I also have some additional analysis, looking at a comparison between the city of Grand Forks and Grand Forks County. I intend to do a little bit more, a little bit bigger of a breakdown comparing the two, but unfortunately, with the number, number of cases, I did have to dedicate a significant amount of my work time to contact tracing. This is the city of Grand Forks. So this is the rate per 10,000 population, because of the smaller population outside of Grand Forks, I thought it might be a better depiction to look at the rate per 10,000 versus the rate per 100,000. So this is the rate per 10,000 for active cases in the city of Grand Forks. And then this is the rate per 10,000 for rural Grand Forks County. So that's anybody who listed an address outside of Grand Forks but listed their county as Grand Forks. The rate has only passed the city of Grand Forks at one point in early this month. We can compare that to the North Dakota rate. And then the rural Grand Forks area rate, which again is the communities, are the communities outside of Grand Forks, as well as Walsh County, Trail County, Nelson, Griggs, and Steel Counties. Taking a quick look at hospitalization data, we, we did change, or we updated our contact tracing system, and so it kind of changed the way that I'm able to get hospitalization data. So I don't have an active rate, but I can show you the rate of new hospitalizations, and it's still kind of, you know, kind of sticking in correlation. This is the Harvard risk levels, and this I did have to change the scale on as well, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to denote that. But I did have to change the scale on that as well because we are now over 50 new cases per 100,000 in Grand Forks County, well into the red. The red on the Harvard risk scale indicates kind of uncontrolled spread versus an orange or yellow where you're, you know, controlling or, you know, in a mitigating type factor or you're threatened at uncontrolled spread. I just wanted to give a quick update on the hospital score as well. So I did follow up with Altru after the meeting last week. What I presented to you was kind of, was kind of an early draft of our score, and I was able to work with Altru to define their levels and kind of fit that in with their capacity management plan. So we do now have good data from Altru, and so that's why we were able to, or that's why the change in data happened today. It's not necessarily reflective of where, or of an increase in hospitalizations related to COVID. It just means that we received the data today, so there was an increase in the number, but that, you know, doesn't necessarily mean a difference compared to what was reported yesterday. And finally, just a quick look at that health officer risk score. So Mark's chart he's working on getting, adding on the overall score. Right now, our overall score is a 2.1, which puts us at the higher risk, at the, kind of the edge of the high-risk scale. 2.25 would put us in, if we had a score above 2.25, that would put us into the severe risk area, which, as you can see, we're kind of maxing out a lot of our, our factors right now. And we've been doing a good job with tests being completed. So even if we're identifying more cases, that isn't going to push us necessarily into red. We'd have to have something else happen, such as a decrease in the testing or an increase in the percent positivity or change in hospital capacity. And then these are similar to what you saw on Mark's slide, so I won't spend too much time on these. But these are looking at where we fit in all of those scoring areas. And then with that, I'm open to any questions.
Vice President Mock.
Yes, Mr. Weber?
I'm not surprised that we've seen an increase in that age group, that 20 to 29. I am surprised that so many of them are symptomatic. 70% symptomatic is, is beyond what we were anticipating, I'm guessing. Is that correct?
Yes, and it is related to spread that is happening, I believe, on campus based off of the, or based off of social connections, kind of with people coming back to the community is where I've been identifying the spread. And, you know, we've, we've seen kind of impacts outside of the, you know, outside of the UND community with some, you know, like different organizations that have had to quarantine employees today, you know, restaurants that have had to close, things like that.
Was there more to that, Mr. Weber, or just an observation?
That's all I've got. I remember we finished. I have some comments.
Anything, Ms. Dockler? No? Anybody on the phone have any comments?
Hi, I'm going to comment. Dana, Sandy speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Sandy.
Could you turn it up a little bit? I can't hear him.
I will try to now. The, I'm taking Ms. Mock and Mr. Doolitz, as always, really appreciate all of your hard work and your dedication to our community cannot be underestimated. You are someone that goes above and beyond, and I really appreciate all of your help. Mr. Phelan earlier said that data, and this isn't a direct quote, but it's a relative plagiarization of what he said, is that data is one thing, but city officials need to make tough decisions when it comes to COVID. Dr. Peterson very clearly said that it's very important for students to go to school. The school district has a matrix and makes their decisions based upon community spread and that community spread in and that community spread and information that they have is only provided by Grand Forks Public Health. We had a meeting with Grand Forks Public Health on Thursday, and the public health department indicated that they have local public health data, and provide local public health data. But the director of public health indicated that she doesn't necessarily have the resources to provide the public data necessary, or at least the public data that I've specifically been asking for, in order to help the school district make their, what I think are reasonable decisions, as, as Mr. Phelan says. I have specifically asked for daily new cases of COVID caused by community spread, and the seven-day average of new cases caused by community spread. And I've been told, again, I was very clearly told by the director of public health, that public health doesn't have the resources to provide the data that I, as a council member, have specifically asked for. Again, I think Mr. Doolitz has done a great job of providing data, a massive amount of data, lots of data that is warranted and reasonable in our, in our county, but it's all county data. And it seems to me that public health should reprioritize the time that it spends collecting data, and actually put a priority on collecting the city of Grand Forks data, as I've requested. And I certainly am only one person, but I think it's very obvious that when our local health professional says that we need to keep kids in school, and our school district is saying that they're making decisions based upon the data that's provided by public health, it doesn't seem reasonable to me that they would be forced to make decisions based upon data that isn't necessarily valid, or at least is most up to date. So I, as one council member, would say, the city council, Todd Phelan, and the mayor should be instructing our department of public health to be providing local data. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Mr. Weber?
May I? Thank you, Vice President Mock. Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Thank you, Dr. Wallace, for being here, and Ms. Swanson, for your work. Thank you, Mr. Phelan and Mr. Mayor, for your comments earlier, and Mr. Mayor for being open-minded and willing to consider all of this. The expert panel did produce their interim report, and that has been read into the record. That's on the public website for this evening's agenda. I'd encourage council members to read that over. It's relatively short. I'd encourage members of the public to take a look at that. There's a lot of information there, but it includes the direction to wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your mask. In some ways, there's, there's some simplicity in their message. We need to keep our schools and businesses open to the greatest extent possible. We've had all spring and summer to plan. We may have squandered some valuable opportunity while our numbers were low. Now, as was predictable, the return of university students is accompanied with increases in COVID infection rates. In fact, I wasn't anticipating that for another week, or two, or three, and now it's happened already, in some alarming ways. The number of charts that you had to expand in order to fit all the datas, telling a story on its own. With all possible haste, it's time for city leadership, including the mayor and council, to make some tough leadership decisions. This is a global pandemic, but we have to realize it's a community problem. It requires local decisions based on local information. The federal government, regardless of who the president is, the federal government is not going to save us. Governor Bergen has too much on his hands to design the sort of necessary localized approaches that we need, and we, we have to take maximum advantage of the federal and state money and resources that might come our way. But overall, we have to look to ourselves, and we must come together and act in concert to serve and protect one another. I'm speaking to members of the council. I'm speaking to you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking to the citizens of Grand Forks, including those who believe COVID is a hoax, those who wear a mask to walk their dogs, and everyone else. For the health of our community, our local economy, for the health of our elderly, our children, and everyone in between, we need to make decisions and come up with a plan. I've now facilitated three COVID response efforts. First was on behalf of Mayor Brown, and then Mayor Bocinski. The first was a series of COVID-related issues. We held these listening sessions with the business community. That resulted in changes of local ordinances to help our local bars and restaurants. I then led the mayor's advisory group, which included outreach to the Bank of North Dakota, the Department of Commerce, meetings with local businesses, business leaders and bankers. And at that time, Grand Forks was able to proudly declare that we were being the most proactive community in the state. More recently, on behalf of Mayor Bocinski, I've helped organize this panel of politically neutral experts to provide their insights and advice. Tonight's report is the initial product of their work. My initial interest in all this was the city's economy and the welfare of our local businesses. Those conversations helped me to understand that it is not possible to separate the pandemic from our economic health. We cannot have public health without a sound economy, and we can't have a strong economy without a healthy population. There's no separating our economic and political health. Again, we've had months to prepare for this time, and now our students are back at UND. And it doesn't make any sense to blame them. Indeed, the failure of the city to provide the strong leadership necessary around COVID threatens all the hard work that President Harmacost and his team at UND have been engaging. Having students wear a mask on campus, and then having them walk about without a mask off-campus contradicts the university's effort. So now what we've got at the university and in our city is a plan that's largely based on testing. And one of the few things on your, on your board is that we're doing well in testing. The state is doing well. Grand Forks has been fortunate in testing, and testing is a useful tool. However, short of shutting down the economy again, which would be even more expensive, testing is our most expensive option. There's the problem with the supplies to conduct the tests. There's the problem of the logistics around the events. There's the problem with getting the tests processed at a lab, which isn't just requiring time, but it requires supplies of its own to, to do the lab work. There's a huge amount of time between, we're getting better, but from when the test is taken until we get results, we have sometimes days of potential exposure, and that's causing us trouble. And then, part of your day was spent on contact tracing. This is another incredibly expensive, labor-intensive part of this testing regimen. And months ago, when you were doing contact tracing, I believe you were averaging relatively low numbers, five or six people that you had to contact. People were isolating at that time. Now, contact tracers have an almost impossible job, because we've kind of opened everything up, and now you have dozens of people, in some cases, that you're trying to contact. And without contact tracing, the testing is, is almost useless. Our society tends to seek the easiest solution. Rather than eating healthy food, exercising, and getting enough rest, we prefer to take a pill for what ails us. There's no pill for COVID. Instead, we want testing to serve as a kind of proxy pill. There's a tendency to think that we don't have to change our behavior, we can just get tested, even insisting that changing our behavior might be an infringement on our liberty. Instead, we want to naively believe that testing is going to save us. And, and, and there may be new tests that may provide more coverage, but we don't have those tests yet. At best, testing is kind of like shutting down our economy. It's almost a sort of insurance. At best, it's meant to help mitigate some of the costs of disaster. But even with other types of insurance, such as car insurance, it doesn't mean that we can start driving carelessly, recklessly, or with total abandon. Instead, we follow rules of the road. We drive defensively, we wear seat belts, we watch out for our own safety and that of others. Testing and shutting down the economy are simply methods for keeping as many healthy and alive as possible, while we wait for imperfect vaccines and better treatment to come on board. In the meantime, we could, and many of us right now are wearing masks. But that's really only effective if the vast majority of us wear them. And apparently, some of our neighbors are unwilling to show this simple courtesy, because it's too much of an infringement. Imagine if the greatest generation had responded to World War II by saying, "No, we won't ration food or gas. No, we won't enlist to serve. No, we won't help build the wartime economy." Doing those things would be an infringement on our liberty. That's not what they did then, that's not what we should be doing now. Wearing a mask is a minor inconvenience. I'm sick of having to wear mine, but it's relatively minor. It's a basic act of decency, and yet, it has irrationally been caught up in a partisan squabble. We need to act for the citizens of Grand Forks and on behalf of our two most important institutional partners, UND and All True. UND's mask policy is ineffective if we don't support it off-campus. All True needs us to keep our infection rates down so that they can survive this difficult time. Otherwise, we risk losing our locally-owned and controlled hospital. If you think there are problems with our hospital now, wait until decisions are made by administrators out of state, or worse, wait till we have to drive to Fargo for surgeries and hospitalizations. Masks are imperfect, but they are the easiest and cheapest thing we can all do. Wash your hands, hopefully you were doing that anyway. Watch your distance, really, six feet is actually six feet, and wear your mask. We have assembled these local experts, the mayor has done that, Grand Forks is fortunate to have such assets to draw on, and I beg council members, please, read their interim report. This group has helped push for the successful development of local risk assessments, and now council needs to make use of that local information, that information that's just been presented by Mark and Michael. We need to develop meaningful criteria for each of the risk levels. We have an extra Monday this month, and I believe we're going to use that for a special COVID session next Monday, rather than taking Monday off. If that's not already part of the plan, I hope that we'll consider doing that. We had far fewer cases back in March, and at that time, we shut down City Hall. Now, at an orange risk level, almost red, we're sitting in here as though things are kind of the way they were a month ago. Things are not the way they were a month ago. We've had months to act responsibly. It's time to assume the responsibility of leadership. It's better that we try something and fail than to simply sit here, week after week, pretending this is not happening and doing nothing. And I don't think that's what we're planning on doing. I think we're planning on coming together and making some really tough decisions. I wish that we would have done this a while ago, but we're going to do it now. So I'm hoping that we'll use next Monday. I appreciate that the city has some protocols in place for addressing different risk levels. I think they're inadequate right now. Perhaps the expert panel could take a look at those, make some recommendations. We need to consider those and make some decisions about that next week. Thank you.
Mr. Clamie?
I appreciate your perspective, Councilman Weber. Sorry, my mask thing is covering. Okay. I'm curious, I know that there's been some emails going around with Mr. Gostad regarding our ability to compel public health through support. You know, can we provide a manpower to get local spread, local active cases, local information so that we can make a local decision?
I'm not, I'm not following your question.
So is there, do, does the council have the authority to compel public health to release that information?
Well, as I understand, they're, they're compiling information, they're getting from the Department of Health, and they're putting together the data as best as they can and as quickly as they can. I'm not aware, you know, and, and I'm not aware of a statute or an ordinance that says you're mandated to prepare data and, and put these schedules together. They're doing as best they can, and that, that was the discussion. So I'm not aware of any statutory mandate that says you have to take this data, and you have to provide it. Let me compare it to another example. You've got a tax assessor that is supposed to complete certain things by statute, assess the property by February 1. That's a mandate. And if the assessor doesn't complete that task, then you can compel the assessor to do that. I'm not aware of the public health having to receive this information and then compile it, be mandated to compile it and provide the information. And I think the discussion, and I was a participant in a discussion, was do the best you can under the circumstances with the time limitations that they have to compile the data for council and, and the mayor.
Sure. And I'm sensitive to the fact that the manpower isn't intense, and I get that. So is there a way for us to act and get manpower in, into public health tomorrow? How do we, how do we do that?
I'll have Debbie also answer. I think we've committed to doing whatever we can, we always have. And from what I heard from Council President Sandy, what he really wants is, he wants to know the community spread statistics, right? And so, I'm sure Mr. Doolitz and others will do the very best we can, so I heard that tonight. So like, you send us requests, just like all the data we've accumulated over time, right? That's what I heard this evening, so I think Mr. Doolitz and Ms. Swanson and all of us are going to do whatever it takes to do that. I think one of the discussions we've had is, Mr. Doolitz is doing an incredible job, and I really mean that. He is, sort of as an opioid coordinator, look what he's doing, it's quite incredible, right? So I think our strategy is to have Michael, along with Mark Schill, you know, working as a third party, to really focus on, on this information and get you guys the analytics that you want, and hopefully by, sooner rather than later, when we know school's going to start next week, that we can get that done. And then we can hire, probably contact tracers is more of a general, actually. There's certainly skill sets, and whomever else we need to do to get that. If there's privacy issues, I don't think we need to debate that, but yes, we are committed. And that's what I heard this, this evening, that's what Mr. Sandy wants, and we're going to do the very best to deliver that on an ongoing basis. So we, we're the administration, we're trying to demonstrate that we're doing the very best we can, and I think every week that we come back here, we deliver more and more, and that's what I heard tonight, we want to know the community spread. That seems to be an issue that public school wants. This is the first time I've heard this request, that we haven't delivered on their within earth, so we'll follow up with Dr. Brenner and get to the bottom of it, because that meetings that we've had, I haven't heard one time the Grand Forks Public School say that we haven't delivered one iota of what they've asked for. But knowing what I heard tonight, we're going to go back to the source, and whatever they need, we're going to try to deliver.
Perfect. And I'm not questioning the job done. I think it's been amazing, and I appreciate all the information, and I think it's really, really well done. I'm just saying, what can we do to give them help? And if you're saying you're on it, I just don't want to come back in a week and say, "We were still figuring it out." I want, you know, what, what can we do? And if it means I have to go drive down there and help you guys, I'll go drive down there and help you guys.
Yeah. I think if you guys want specific things from us, it would be good to hear that. I heard that from Mr. Sandy tonight. Because sometimes, it's hard sometimes to capture the story, to be frank.
Yep.
Okay? And another frankness is, there's a lot of people working really hard, trying to deliver, and even though they get some kudos, right? What they're hearing is, they still haven't delivered, there's more to do, and sometimes we're not, they're not quite sure what's being asked for. In the meetings I have, I've had nobody throwing their hands in the air about we haven't delivered. And so, I've heard that this evening, we're committed to it. We always have been, and we always will be.
Perfect.
If I could add something?
Mr. Veen? Yes?
So I, first of all, I wanted to start out by thanking, well, all of us in attendance here, but Mr. Doolitz, Debbie Swanson, the entire health department for the work they have done and continue to do tirelessly to get us to where we are. This has been going on for months and months and months, and they've been working exceptionally hard, and we wouldn't be here and doing as well without the work they do. So I want to thank you, Em. I also want to say thanks to Mr. Weber. I also want to say thanks to Mr. Weber because he's absolutely right. The three, he's probably done more single-handedly than any other council member here to get and try to do something. He's become, I believe, an expert almost in testing with all the meetings that he's been a part of and the advisory groups and whatever. I think that needs to be very much understood and appreciated. But I heard some things today that were really, really alarming. The fact that we have uncontrolled spread. The fact that we have, will have a new record again for COVID cases. The fact that we need a strategy to keep kids in school. And, you know, we've been kind of sliding along, and I think it's now is the time we have to do something. And I also agree with, you know, data can only go so far. It's going to take action. And I really wanted to support what Mr. Weber said about having us get together next Monday and have a firm direction that the city council wants to see the city moving because we keep talking, we keep getting data, we keep getting better data. But the data we're getting indicates things are getting worse. And I used to watch these daily when we'd have one, two, three, five cases. And to now see the numbers of where we're at, it's critical that we figure out what we're going to do. And I think I've heard them say there's a few basic things. You know, the testing and the contact tracing are critical. Social distancing is what we try to do with behavior, hand washing. Masks is one of those things that the CDC and others have said is essential. I'm especially concerned about this come-election time at the Alara Center and what that's going to mean. That's a topic that I think we need to also be talking about down the road. But I think we have the urgency right now of figuring out a means to move forward. We certainly don't want to see the economy shut down again, as has been stated. That's devastating. What are the things that we can do that can be the most effective? And when is the most appropriate time to do that? So I really support we take what we have between now and next week, analyze it if we need to any further, and then get together and have a plan, a clear plan, unless we actually come up with something better tonight. So that's my recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Mr. Sandy, did you have something?
Well, thank you. I certainly appreciate Mr. Phelan's sentiments. Apparently, he and I were not on the same page regarding my Tuesday email when I specifically asked for this information and never actually even got a response from public health. I'm happy to have a working session on Monday night. I'm actually looking forward to it where we can discuss our COVID action plan. Not only that, have a real good discussion about the mayor's concept for down payment assistance and how we can move that forward as well. So thank you, Ms. Mock.
I have a couple of questions. So are we officially adopting this as our color scheme? So are we officially saying that this is how we are measuring and assigning how we as a community are doing? Is that, has that actually been decided? This was presented last Monday.
This is what is our guiding. And I've said, oh, we think it's, again, we're trying to say this is adapting. We don't know it all. I think our expert panel has said generally it's pretty good, plus or minus. You know, there's areas to quibble. So people that know, that are experts, look at it and say, it's pretty good. You could adjust here, there. But I think we're comfortable moving forward with this as a guiding principle. Again, these are guidelines, and it shouldn't substitute decision-making in the leadership.
Can I make a motion that we accept this?
Wait a second. Okay. So one thing that I just wanted to ask and actually get experts to weigh in on is whether we need to consider adding the Grand Forks Public Schools and their matrix and where they are into these five indicators. Because even, you know, if we are in the green on tests completed, if, you know, the public school system was having to shut down because they're at a red status, that seems similar to All True to me.
So just to clarify, some of the conversations that have gone on in the past week is, I've been working with our regional epidemiologist, Sean McBride, and he was at the school, the school board meeting last week. And he has discussed with the school about changing the way that their, kind of their color system or the system that they had come up with because he recognizes that community spread is kind of a determination of last resort. So if we can't figure out, you know, any other way that someone could have gotten COVID, then we just say, well, it was community spread because we can't figure anything out. And so it is very dependent on the contact tracer and things like that. And so he proposed to the school a couple of different models. One would be using the Grand Forks, this risk score that I put together. And then the other option would be using some of the guidance from, I believe it was Minnesota or from what Fargo schools had put together as two other options for the school to consider. So, you know, I wasn't sure where we were at with those discussions. And so that's why I didn't include the community spread in the slides tonight. I actually had a slide for it. And I, you know, prioritized with my time to make sure that I could paint a picture of where we were at right now. And I didn't think that that was part of the, or an important part of the picture today. So, you know, I prioritize the other things based on the time that I had available. You know, I would lean against using community spread in that manner because that's a piece of, or the way I obtain that data is from the state through our contact tracing versus everything else in the risk score, which is all publicly available data available online. Anybody could download this data. Anybody could take basically the same, the same kind of worksheet that I did and reweigh things however they want. So there's a lot of transparency to it, aside from the one part that it's hard to be transparent, or like that's a little bit more subjective, I guess. And that's the hospital capacity because we aren't the hospital, and there's not, you know, like a statewide hospital registry on the number of beds available. But I think what All True is providing us is very helpful in kind of the overall scheme of the risk score.
Oh, I agree. And Ms. Swanson wants to add something. I guess my thought process was similar to the All True. If we should be incorporating whatever Grand Forks Public Schools is saying, if they're at an orange, we're incorporating that perhaps in a similar way to All True. Ms. Swanson, did you have something to?
Vice President Mock, members of the council, I feel the need to clear the air a little bit in terms of many of the things that have been said. And I agree with the summary that Mr. Phelan made, and Michael's answered questions very well. I'm not aware of any school district in North Dakota among my colleagues, of public health colleagues that are separating their city from their county data when they're providing information to their school districts. I'm not aware of anybody that's doing that. We had a meeting with the Department of Public Instruction on Saturday morning. It was a webinar between the Health Department and DPI. And superintendents were invited to be there, and local health departments were invited to be there. And the governor specifically noted that in Grand Forks, we had a really good system of supporting our schools in decision-making because we have five people from our department dedicated to helping them with this work. They're color-coded for the schools they're assigned to. Keep in mind, we also support all the Grand Forks County schools as well. So we're doing a lot of work to help schools make decisions. And I'm not aware of anywhere that we are separating out this data from city and county because the reality is our county is not that large, and people move around in it. And so what we're seeing for the whole county is a really decent indicator. I'll reiterate all the things that Michael said as well. Grand Forks Public Schools has not asked us for any more specific information, but they do have a lot of questions, and we are helping to answer those as best we can. I'm not sure that it's appropriate for you to be using a school indicator for decision-making about adopting a dashboard. I guess that would be your decision. Hospital data is included because it's an element of how we are going to treat people if they do become sick. Obviously, as public health professionals, we want to prevent that. And so that's a late indicator. But we want to make sure that if people do get sick, that there's a place for them to be cared for. And I just wanted to be available if you had any additional questions that weren't answered previously. If not, thank you for the time.
I have one question, Ms. Swanson. You know, with the spike that we have, of course, we saw what happened in Cass County and in Burnie County where the governor has put together a special task force. I'm not sure what the name of that is. Has anything been proposed for Grand Forks with the numbers now that we've surpassed both of them?
Ms. Mock, members of the council, Mr. Veen, we have not heard anything recently, but it would not surprise me if that should occur given our case numbers now. I think it's a good indicator of what will happen when you do robust testing in a population at risk for spreading a disease. We know that there's certain social activities and other things that happen that place people more at risk. Interestingly, Cass County's outbreak was much more related to long-term care in vulnerable populations. Bismarck started in daycare settings, and now we're seeing it in that 20 to 29-year-old age group. So I think it just shows that we have all kinds of risks out there, all kinds of populations that need our messages. So in answer to your question, we would welcome additional resources, absolutely, whether they're additional contact tracing so that Michael can devote more of his time to data because he has a pretty heavy lift with like three hats he's wearing right now, or if it's just more funding to our community to devote to this overall effort. But I fully recognize policy decisions are also really important here, too. And you have those before you, some serious policy decisions. And I hope that we have an audience that's listening tonight and all are taking home the message about what they can do personally. What can they do in their business? What can they do in their social circle or their circle of influence to improve our situation?
Mr. Weber?
First of all, thanks for that perspective on the rising cases in Cass County, Burley County, and ours. I hadn't thought of it in those terms. That's useful. But with that, the current Grand Forks Health Officer Risk Score Dashboard, that was reviewed by the expert panel. They were giving feedback as that was being developed. Is it perfect? I don't know that there's such a thing as a perfect one. But at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to council that this be adopted for future decision-making processes.
Is there a second to that?
I'd second that.
Ms. Docler seconds that motion. Any discussion?
Ms. Mock?
Yes, Mr. Sandy.
Hey, I really appreciate Ms. Swanson's comments. And I also, as I always say, I very much appreciate what our public health is doing. Sometimes I feel like our public health thinks I'm trying to sway numbers in order to get numbers lower in Grand Forks or whatever. What I'm actually trying to do is provide our school district with the valuable information that they need because their matrix says they're using daily new cases caused by community spread as their decision-making process for whether they send students home or close schools. And knowing that, being an amateur statistician who had Dr. Peterson's father as one of my statistical instructors at U N D, I know that if Grand Forks, the city of Grand Forks is approximately 18, or 80% of the population of Grand Forks County, if there are no cases outside of the city of Grand Forks, the effect, the additional effect on the city of Grand Forks is upwards of 6% movement one way or the other, in which case I believe that the numbers for the city of Grand Forks could actually be considerably worse right now than what are being reported based upon the info coming out of Grand Forks Public Health, which is again why I believe, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Phelan, I believe Mr. Phelan, Ms. Swanson is a direct reporter of yours, in which case if you tell her that the city of Grand Forks wants the daily new cases caused by community spread, she would be in dereliction of her duties not actually providing that information. I would like public health to provide the data. Thank you. And I'll make the motion, if no one else on the council wants to do it, I'll make the motion that the city council of Grand Forks requires public health to provide this information. I'm tired of waiting for it.
We do have a motion on the table, and so I don't know procedurally how that happens. Mr. Phelan, Mr. Gostad?
Did you vote on the dashboard? I would vote on that.
Mr. Sandy, can we vote on the first motion?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the dashboard? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the dashboard to set our risk level in Grand Forks, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So that motion passes unanimously. Mr. Sandy, did you want to make? Mr. Phelan, did you have a comment first?
I would just advise, it sounds like we're going to have a work session next week, and we'll come back. We'll strategize this week. You will be able to make a motion next week on whatever we bring back in that regards because then we'll have a follow-up city council meeting the week thereafter, plus one day because of the holiday weekend. So I think the message was clear. We want local data, whether it's community spread or whatever that is. So we will dig deep, and it probably requires some state assistance. So we'll have an answer at the very least, and maybe we have some solutions. At the very least, we'll brief it, and then you can decide if you want to make a motion to the following city council at that point in time.
Mr. Sandy, any thoughts?
I'll always defer to our city administrator. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Cavani?
Mr. Phelan, is there anything that we need to do as a city council to empower you to do what you got to do over the next week? Is there anything you need from us? Are you feeling good?
Always feeling good. I think what we need to do is sometimes it's, I want, we need to figure out, is it a resource problem? Is it a, do we have the data collection? Is it a state in North Dakota issue? And so we'll drill down, and we'll figure out what the hurdles may be. I never like to blame while we don't have enough people. We can always reconfigure people. And I always hate to have city councils start directing administrative actions. There's no telling what could happen there. So my goal as a city administrator is to at least to identify the hurdles, and maybe some we may not be able to come out, jump over, I guess. I'm not a hurdler, but we'll continue to work over the week on that. We'll have answers on Monday and hopefully prior to Monday so that we can put that in your information packet. And if we're going to have a work session on COVID, obviously, COVID is really important, probably the most important thing we did. And there was some discussion about city policies or what we're doing. Maybe I could give you an update on kind of what we're doing with, how our employees are doing. And so if I could go into there. So I think if we want to talk about, Mr. Sandy talked about the housing program or COVID. If there are other items the city council would like to have on this work session, we can put those on there, too. I think with our workforce, as you can probably imagine, Tangi Bouvet, our HR director, her phone was busier today than normal because we have issues within the city of Grand Forks, too. So we were really successful going through the spring. We did some great flood action planning, made it through that. We had an officer shooting. We had assemblies of people, I'll say. We had some protests and like, and we really performed very well for our public safety. And for the most part, our employees stayed well, and those around them stayed well. So we were really successful at this point. I think what we've identified is the other thing that we have during this emergency and we have some really robust lead policies. And so we went above and beyond what the federal statute provided for us. So if something happens, we're treating our employees very well and very above and beyond what the federal standard is. You should know that, too. But a lot of, we have a lot of close contacts. So we're working through all those details of, you know, someone's child was playing with another child, and suddenly there's a positive. And so we're dealing with a lot of employees and what a close contact means. Tangi always tells me this, but all city employees are essential, okay? Maybe some are more essential than others, but all city employees are essential, meaning that we can compel if we needed to, that you've got to work unless, you know, you're positive with close contacts. We've got to be able to do law enforcement. We've got to do firefighting. We've got to do first response. We've got to answer the phone on 911. We've got to do waterworks. We've got to do public works. 911, we've got to do waterworks, we've got to do public works. And so we're kind of tracking that, just so you know, we have some of our own challenges, and a lot of it is with the close contacts, as you can about imagine, whether it's children or friends or whatever else. So just so the council knows, we're working through that, we're performing all the essential functions that we need to, but we're tracking those day-to-day, too. And so that's the other thing on our plate right now. As we move forward, there's been a lot of discussion of how we do, how do we interact. So from down, from assessing, should, assessing is not going to go out to someone's house now and perform some, they're going to try to do outside stuff. So from assessing to all the way to public works, we're evaluating in a hybrid kind of way, how do we engage? Because not all of us have the fortune of being able to work from an office where we can go home and do things. Some people have to work on the street, they have to work in a squad car, they have to do things, and we don't have an ability to work from home. So we're sorting all that out and try to be very adaptable, trying to work in a hybrid manner. We are contemplating some services, and council member, whoever emailed me the other day about, when are we going to do fall cleanup? And so we said September 14th, that week, we're going to do it, okay? But we're contemplating that, because that's close contact, people working in close proximity to one another. In a normal year, our operators love to do that, and the citizens love us when we perform that work. So we're going to contemplate that, we're going to plan to do it. But if it's not safe and secure, we're certainly not going to put our public works operators in harm's way, just like we didn't do for the flood action planning, because we wanted to make sure they were healthy. So when that happened, they were there to service those things. So those are all the things that we're contemplating. The phone has picked up, because a lot of employees have questions, and we're going to sort through those things, and we can brief you kind of where we stand on Monday, too, with our, most importantly, with our workforce. I know we're concerned about schools, but you know, you have, you know, 600 employees that are performing essential functions. And heck, we've performed them since March uninterrupted. We've been at this. And so, and those are the other employees that I'm concerned about, too. So with that, that's kind of where we're at, and we'll have a full-fledged, and whatever else you want to brief, we'll be ready to go, and working hard on whatever you want us to do.
Ms. Mock, can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
I would, first of all, I appreciate what Mr. Phelan said. I think the rest of the community, the entire city workforce has done an amazing job, and they continue to do all of that. And, you know, the services that we get are unparalleled, I think, a very much amazing job, and appreciate that a lot. I would say this, though, that I think the work session next week should be dedicated to the COVID and not diluted with other items that are out there. Those other items are important, but I think COVID is critical. And I don't think, I would like to see it diluted down, or we hurry through that to go to other additional items. And the last comment I'd like to make is, I would like us to be able to have at next Monday's meeting, the power to act, not just recommend, otherwise we're kicking the can down the road another week after that. And I don't know what that exactly entails for us to be able to do that, but I like the idea of a work group, a committee of the whole, but I'd like that committee to have the power to act, because I think time is of the essence.
Mr. Phelan?
City Council Vice President Mock, I recall a former city attorney said, we can have a committee of the whole, and you can act at a committee of the whole meeting, and take action. That's where we call our roles, but I'd add Mr. Gossard can confirm that.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at this, and to the extent that you can take action in a committee hall, I'll be able to make that recommendation at that meeting next week.
My only comment would be, we may have to advertise that as more than a committee of the whole, if in fact we can't. I do believe that there should be a way that we could make that an action meeting, not just a committee meeting.
Understood, and I will try to get an answer to you before you have to do the notice of the agenda.
Thank you.
So now that we have at least made a recommendation to adopt this risk score, for a policy toolbox, I guess, are we adopting the governor's recommendations for all these levels, or are we starting there and then amending as a city to what we feel is appropriate? I will open that to discussion, if anybody would like to contribute.
Sorry, would you repeat that?
Well, what I'm wondering is, if we're adopting this risk score, then are we also adopting the governor's recommendations for what policy measures we're taking as we go through these different risk levels, or are we going to come up with our own Grand Forks specific?
I believe the mayor has already proposed some risk guidelines based upon risk level assessments. And it was my intention that we review those and consider them, modify them, approve them, that that be an important part of our work next week.
Okay, so we'll take these guidelines into the work session on Monday and then amend from there? Is that the intent?
I think council, Vice President Mock, and members of city council, I think we'd like to take statewide guidelines, but nuance them locally driven moving forward. And there's some other things that, you know, this mayor, nor the former mayor, didn't do regarding shutting down certain businesses. So we'll send out all the current executive orders of what those entail at this point in time. But neither mayor did go to extra, the governor kind of cleared the way for certain closures, business closures. That was done by Governor Berger, that was not done by Mayor Brown, not that he didn't have authority to do, but we'll let you know what kind of orders we have in place. And there's maybe, I would say, a good discussion, and maybe I would ask Mr. Gossard in advance, you know, send him emails, about what authority that you have as a city council or as a mayor about things that we can or cannot do. So if people want to propose something, that I would say Mr. Gossard has that information in advance, so that he can center that in advance.
Thank you. Mr. Weber?
Mr. Phelan, could I also request, I know that the expert panel may or may not be able to meet this week. Would it be possible to put out those protocols to those panel members and get some feedback from them? They've done some work by email in the past as well.
Yeah, I will certainly do that.
Thanks.
Is there a way to make actions like that more public? I didn't even realize there was an expert panel that was meeting and making recommendations. Is there a way, I mean, now we have the recommendations, so that's public, but I didn't even realize that that was going on?
Oh, I've mentioned it at council meetings for the last two or three months now.
That there was a specific expert panel, and is there a way to know what was discussed?
Part of the intention was to keep that group small and non-political, and to let them kind of freely brainstorm. So the mayor's been meeting with them. We didn't want to make it another council meeting. But it's been mentioned now for, yeah, the last couple of months. Maybe my speeches have probably been too long, and it gets lost in all of my bladder. But I've mentioned it each time, yeah.
Anybody else have discussion?
Ms. Mock?
Yes, Mr. Sandy.
That's all. Perhaps that was my fault as well. I was vaguely aware of the mayor's committee, and Mr. Weber has mentioned it to me, and I probably should have brought you up to speed on that, so I sincerely apologize. I want to go back to Mr. Veen's comments about keeping this, meeting the COVID only. I think it's imperative that we visit about the mayor's down payment assistance program next week, because we only, to the best of my recollection, that concept is coming back to the city council meeting in the first meeting in September. And so we don't have any more time to visit about it, which is why I believe if we're going to be able to shape reasonable public policy, we'll need a night to visit about it. And so I'm happy to stay late, like we are tonight, to work on that as well. I think it's very important for our community. Thank you, Ms. Mock.
Thank you. Ms. Dockler, did you have something?
Well, we did. So since we have adopted the new, I suppose, or risk level, and we are technically in more than almost red, with the promise of 100-somethings new positive cases tomorrow, and I'm only imagining more as I drove around this weekend in Ward 2 and home, where I have a portrait of both King Wai and UND students, as well as many other folks that are in Grand Forks, having many, many parties outside on their lawn, which is great, and glad that they were outside. That's great. But it improves much larger than 20 or 30, and not social distancing, and certainly not wearing masks and embalming, which kind of loosens your sense of propriety in maintaining social distancing and not swimming in things like this that have the virus. And so I think that we need to, a later time meeting next Monday, I'm fit to discuss this further, but I think that we do need to start making some decisions and putting some things forward. And so I think it would be in our best interest and house of prevention for a tier, for a common tier that will process a lot in the end, to look at doing a mask mandate in single buildings. So that when people enter into the building, that they do, they are required to wear a mask in city, not a citywide mandate. And I did see that in 211 in the last two minutes, that there is some discussion of that. So I would love to hear more, but I wanted to bring this conversation up before we begin.
And I'm not on a speaker, so hopefully you heard some of that. But I would really like to start having this discussion now, because I think that if we keep pushing it out and saying, we're going to wait, we're going to wait, let's meet on the 31st, let's do this, school is starting. School has already started for UND this week. School is starting on the 31st. Intro to kindergarten and all of the sped kids already had school earlier this summer. Driver's Ed was already going on as well, and there were some measures that were taken, put into place to protect kids and the staff that were working. But we keep saying eventually, or yeah, we'll meet then, or we'll go past this, and we just need to make some decisions. Unfortunately, prevention, if it's, it works, you don't really get to see that the results that would say, oh, this is great, this is working. And so it's hard to step forward in that step of faith, to ask for preventative measures. But I think that what we have seen from closing our schools in March, and even UND closing, and everybody kind of starting to pull back, and the mayor's orders to shut down bars in places where people are not going to socially distance, really made it so that we were a lead within North Dakota and within the United States on how we were addressing COVID. But as soon as we started getting essentially tired of dealing with it, and started opening up in ways, and not having a constant conversation that was actionable, yes, we were talking, but we weren't taking actions and measuring and taking actions after looking at our measures and looking at our data. And I know that we're constantly asking for more data, and that's good, we should, we want to see it. But at the same time, I don't think that we need to always say we have to wait until this next one, we have to wait until this next one, because that's how we get behind the curve. That's how we're looking at hospitals that are already filled, and by then we've missed the boat on trying to be preventative and trying to protect people. Because at that point, how are we going to curb it? We're not. And we have so much opportunity in North Dakota, being a more rural state, and in Grand Forks in particular, to utilize some of these just natural assets, the way that our population is and the way that we have urbanized or not, that we can make some of these decisions that will help people in the long run. Because again, it's not just when our hospitals are overrun, it's when all of our daycares close. It doesn't matter if the schools are open and the daycares are closed, parent's still going to have to stay home, or someone else is still going to have to stay home with a kid. It doesn't matter if our daycares are open and half the businesses in town are closed. We have to figure out a new normal, and it's going to be uncomfortable, it's going to be somewhat frustrating, but we have to do it. We have to be responsible. And as city council, I truly think that we have an opportunity here to lead. We were doing it really well in March, I think. I'd like to get back there. And so I would like to propose that we have a mask mandate within our city buildings, including for our city employees, so that they are protected as well. Because what we know is that masks exponentially increase the protection that people have in not transmitting the disease. The North Dakota Medical Association was just in the paper today about how they were advising that all public school districts strongly recommend they adopt policies for wearing masks. That's great. That's going to protect those kids, that's hopefully going to protect those staff, but those kids leave the school, those staff members leave the school, and they're not necessarily going to wear their masks unless it is a mandate of some sort in certain buildings. And I think the city has the opportunity to lead by example. We're not mandating it across the city, but we are going to say and take a firm stand that we know that this helps to protect people, we care about our people, and so we're going to take these steps. Now the ball is in your court businesses, the ball is in your court churches, school system, everywhere else, but we take the lead, because that's our job. The city is what ties together all of these different entities. And it's in our best interest, and everyone that lives here, to not shy away from it because we're afraid of what kind of chatter may come from it. Because again, prevention in the front is going to save us so much heartache on the end when we have to wait for that cure. So I would like to make a motion that we mandate masks in city buildings, and that we mandate that our employees wear masks while they're working, when we are in the orange, and definitely when we are in the red, and truly when we're in the yellow and the green, until there are other things that we can rely on, such as a vaccination that's available. Because again, we're not going to force everyone to take the vaccination either. A mask is a simple thing. A mask is the least invasive piece that we could possibly mandate to keep people safe. So I would like to make that motion.
There's a motion on the floor? Is there a second? Mr. Weber?
For clarification, so your motion is for at all risk levels, city employees would be mandated to wear a mask while they're at work at all times?
I think that it can be open to discussion to the extent that if you are in your office and you shut the door and you are by yourself, you can take your mask off. But the minute that you move and go somewhere else, or you enter into a conversation with another person and you are not socially distancing, then you need to wear your mask. And I think that perhaps we, I don't know how you would design this motion, Mr. Phelan, but to open it up so that there is some ability to write specifically how we want to do that, but then say, we also are going to start this now. We're not going to continue waiting.
Mr. Gossard?
Yeah, may I interject? I think the ad hoc method of doing motions tonight is probably going to run into some problems in trying to define exactly what you're trying to accomplish, because the motion started out as all masks everywhere under all conditions, and then there were some walkback a little bit. I think if, I think the council needs just be cautious about taking these motions at this juncture, when you're scheduling something for Monday, to consider these matters. Because I think there are some implications and unintended consequences that you may not be aware of, and you haven't had an opportunity to thoughtfully go through and think about and put whatever conditions you want on these particular motions. So I would just caution the council in acting in that manner.
Could I ask a question about that? So on the agenda this evening, we have the city of Grand Forks Workplace Safety and Risk Level Guidelines. And I'm needing to zoom in on that a little bit to be able to read it. And I'm needing to zoom in on that a little bit to be able to read it. But it sounds like it's likely that we're going to be in a red risk level tomorrow, according to what Mr. Dulitz has told us about the numbers he has already tonight. Well, no, you didn't say that, did you? It would likely stay in orange. But that's the numbers you've got today. If the current trend continues, we may be, it's possible that we're red by next Monday. The, even with the red level, according to your current guidelines, Mr. Mayor, mask-wearing is only just ever encouraged. Is that right?
That's correct.
So Ms. Dokler?
Well.
Yeah, please.
I think what we're seeing is extremely high numbers that are probably not coming down. Schools starting. And I think most of us are wanting to see some action and wanting to know if the action isn't taking place now, at what level, at what risk level, at what number will it take place? So perhaps a better way is to potentially have a motion such as this brought forth next Monday, if Ms. Dokler and Mr. Gosted could work together to see what that might look like. I would find it hard to believe that you couldn't have a recommendation or a policy for city properties put into place. And I think that, I think that council members are wanting to see action so that we are ahead of this because it is very disconcerting when you see numbers creep up and you don't know what the response is or you don't know what that means. And I want to be very careful with this because I think in no way do we not respect or appreciate the job that our city staff is doing. Public health is working around the clock. There is more work than they ever expected to do. City staff is working around the clock. There were so many problems in March. There was such a learning curve. We haven't seen city services stop. But I think as policymakers, I want to know that we are making the difficult decisions. I don't have a problem making difficult decisions. I want to know that we are in the best place we can be, especially before public schools are going back into place and we might have children that test positive. And it's not just children. It's also the staff members and the paras that might work with them and the families that they take that home to. So I think that that's what we're seeing is we want to see some measured actions so that we can feel like we are taking the responsibility that we said we would take.
Mock, if I could add one comment here to it?
Yes.
I appreciate what Ms. Dokler has identified. I think there's a lot of frustration we all have because it's been slow and coming. And I do think that there's a lot, between now and next week though, there will be others that we can use. We don't have to recreate the wheel in this case. There's other policies that are out there that I think we could utilize as examples for us and have that ready for next week. But in the absence of maybe being able to formally do it tonight, I think I would just personally like to double down and just so encourage city employees to use their masks and really ask the public, even though it's not a mandate, to do the same when they're in public buildings. If in fact, we don't make that motion tonight and formalize it next week.
Mr. Weber?
Yeah. So for weeks, months, I've been asking for this. And now Ms. Dokler's had the courage to make a motion. And I'm torn. I'm wanting to immediately jump on and support her. But there are cases where city employees can't wear a mask, right? There, you've already identified some situations where maybe they wouldn't need to wear a mask. And I don't know how we put all of that in a motion tonight. So Ms. Dokler, how are you feeling about the discussion that's taken place since your motion? Where would you like this to go?
So I'm not always the most patient person. And I don't love the idea of tabling this until the 31st because again, the school system is starting on the 31st. And yes, the schools are saying that kids need to wear masks, but everyone around them in their lives aren't necessarily doing that. And if we are looking at increased numbers consistently of positives in the community and all of those people that they possibly came into contact with, we're talking about a lot of people. And we can keep being cautious, cautious, cautious. And there's merit to that. But at some point, we have to make a decision. And so if it would make people feel more comfortable on council, I would table this motion and bring forward a draft that we could go over on the 31st. However, again, we, as Mr. Weber said earlier, we've squandered a lot of time to take action. The mask option is the easiest and the simplest action that we can take to try and protect people. And Mr. Weber is absolutely correct. There are people, according to CDC guidelines, that it's probably not great for them to wear a mask. But I think that we can follow the CDC guidelines in creating that and not reinvent the wheel, as was earlier mentioned, because there's other entities in this community that have already mandated their own mask mandated policies by employers specifically. So I think it would be a pretty quick thing that we could pull together. And I am not a lawyer, so Mr. Gosted may disagree with me. However, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. So if that is the consensus of the council, I would withdraw and bring forward a draft on the 31st. But again, the fact that we continue to say next time, we're past that. We truly are past that now.
Mr. Cavani?
Please.
Just a quick callback, between now and the 31st, Mayor Bochensky, if we transition into red, would you consider how we handle our city properties? Just that way we have something a little bit in between now and then?
Yeah, it's definitely, you know, if Ms. Dokler brings something forward sooner than that, we'll definitely look at it. I think you need to be very clear if you're looking for an enforcement action to be taken against employees that are doing that or public that comes in, then you're talking about something different than what you're saying up there. And I think, I don't know, you want to clear that up, Mr. Gosted? Or do you have, need to look into that a little bit more?
That's precisely the reason that I gave, part of the reason I gave the cautionary warning to council tonight is there are a host of issues that, you know, may result from this. Like what is the enforceability of it? How are you going to enforce these terms? You know, there's just a host of things that I've written down here that play into it that I think need to have some thought behind it before you take any action. And I'm not suggesting that I won't give thought to it. But if, you know, there are a number of buildings and it would seem logical to me that you'd want to have discussion with those that are managing those buildings as well to get their input.
If I may, Ms. Mock?
Yes, Mr. Weber.
I'm going to kind of go along with what Mr. Cavani was asking. You know, just two city blocks to the east of here, there's an entire state that has a mask mandate. And I was in eastern Montana and they have a mask mandate. And I didn't see mask police around, but I did see a much higher rate of compliance. So something seems to be possible. In the meantime, Mr. Mayor, short of a motion, short of a mandate, can you tell us something that you'll do in terms of encouraging behaviors beyond what we've done so far?
Well, I think, first of all, we need to take anecdotal things out of this. You look at the state of Minnesota, which has a mask mandate, had 717 cases yesterday. Are masks something that can help? Absolutely. I've stated that from the very beginning. You want to talk about Montana and Minnesota, but you don't want to talk about South Dakota, which is a different story. I think we need to remove the anecdotal. And I think if council wants something, put something together and present it. If you want to keep talking about it and not doing anything, then what do you think is going to happen? So I guess my recommendation would be to put something pen to paper that you want to see happen, and I'll look at it.
Fair enough. And that's justified what you just said. But as head of the bureaucracy, it's one of the major obligations, charges, responsibilities of your office. Can you tell us something to set our minds at ease for the next week?
I think all along, I've been most interested in looking at hospitalizations. We talked about this from the beginning. We want to make sure we can treat this. If this is going to be around forever, a group of college students getting sick and recovering is another 100 that will like less, be less likely to contract it. Again, there's some cases now I've seen that it's possible to re-contract this. Are we trying to slow this down or are we trying to end it? We seem to be playing this middle ground and everybody wants to talk, but nobody wants to say what we're really trying to do here. If it's just to slow it down, keep our hospitals at a level where they can continue to treat this until we can move forward, then we need to start thinking about this differently. And if 20 to 29-year-olds is where the spike and we're having trouble hamping that down, but they're not the ones that are getting sick and taking those hospital spaces, we need to look at that, too. I think we've kind of decided to risk, to be risk averse without knowing what our risk aversion is. I think we need to look at that a little bit more closely. And that's why I'm open. If you want to bring something up that makes sense, I'll definitely look at it. But the number I'll be looking at is hospitalizations. And it's always a trailing indicator to a certain extent. And we haven't necessarily seen that recently due to the demographic that we have had the spike in. But that's, you know, continuing to take care of our vulnerable population is going to be crucial and important. We don't want this to spread to them. So that's where the risk certainly is with the college-aged students and the younger people. But we need to decide, what are we trying to do? Are we trying to end this with no risk? If that's the case, we need to shut everything down. If we're just trying to slow it, then we need to figure out where's that balance and we need to set that risk level. We haven't set that. That bounces around for everybody. I'd like to see what's the end goal. Let's figure out the end goal. If this is going to be in our lives for a long time, then it's a different end goal. If we think we're going to have a vaccine that's 100% effective, then, you know, if that's going to come in two months, then we sure shouldn't be messing around. We should just shut everything down till that vaccine comes out. I don't think that's the case either. So I think setting, having a real conversation of what our risk level is, what we're really trying to accomplish here and what metrics we're really looking at, and then propose something. I've seen a lot of talking, but zero proposing anything.
I think the interest isn't slowing it down. I don't think we're going to, I don't believe there is a 100% vaccine. There isn't one for the flu. This is a rare thing. You're right, we need to bring something forward next week. So Ms. Dokler, you'll work with Mr. Gostad and try to come up with something by next Monday, yes?
It will probably be done before next Monday. Today is Monday. We have more than ample time to have something done and ready way before then. Because again, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're looking at the CDC guidelines and we're looking at implementation to protect people. This isn't about arresting every single person walking down the street without a mask on. This isn't about taking our GFPD and burdening them with that. It's absolutely not about that in any way whatsoever. And I think that sometimes we get into this discussion about the extremes, which to be fair, you do need to talk about. However, at some point, again, you need to take action and you need to implement. And that can't always be what is the obstacle to protecting the most people in your community. So yes, I will be happy to work, Mr. Gostad, and bring something forward probably much sooner than Monday.
Mr. Cavani? Oh, Mr. Weber, anything else? Anyone on the phone have anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Is there, oh, yes, Ms. Dokler.
Thank you. I guess we will resume next Monday. I do think, I do want to say thank you again to staff. Thank you to public health. Thank you to engineering. Thank you to everyone who's managing. We do need to make a concerted effort to move forward together as a unified front as much as we possibly can. I think policy differences should be hammered out as policy differences. I think it is a sincere lack, I think it's a sincere need for our leadership to be true leadership and that we work together on behalf of the community. This is a public health situation. And we need to be committed to coming up with the best policies that we can and supporting each other and supporting our other entities, like the public school system, like our city staff. And we need to always keep that at the forefront of everything we're doing. Thank you. We are adjourned.